Hi guys, welcome to the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for May 16th, 2013. May I have a roll call of the members?
Anne Brinkman.
Present.
Alan Bucknam.
Present.
Steve Timms.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Dick Matthews.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Gracie Gildner, absent.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have an approval for the order of the agenda?
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Second?
A second.
Please vote. Please vote. Did you mean to press? This is the agenda.
This is the agenda.
Sorry.
Excuse me.
Yeah, redo. Vote again.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
I move for approval of the minutes of the May 2nd, 2013 meeting.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Vote, please. One more time.
Motion approved, five to three.
Thank you. Now is the time for the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on a subject not appearing on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody signed up for public forum? Or anybody that didn't sign up that wants to speak on anything that we're not covering tonight? Nope. Anybody? Yes, sir?
What's it mean not covered in the agenda?
So we have three cases tonight for public hearing. If you are here to speak about something not related to those three public hearings, you're welcome to come up. For example, if you have a concern about your neighbor's fence height, or a noise ordinance, or something that's not related to tonight's case, you can come up. Otherwise, we close the public forum and move on.
I guess we can speak to the issue.
Yes, that's coming in the public hearing. This is, this is, sometimes we have guests show up, citizens show up, and speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda. And they have the right to speak, and they'll be televised, and then citizens can see them. But they're not speaking on the three cases that are coming up. Is there anybody for that? Okay. Close the public forum. And before I open the public hearing, let me kind of give you a tutorial on what's going to happen tonight. Thank you very much, first of all, for coming. It's your right as a citizen of Wheat Ridge to come and speak on any case in front of Planning Commission, and we appreciate your voice. I have a couple requests. First, put your phone on vibrate, or turn it off. Thank you. Second, be respectful of whoever is speaking at the dais. Okay? That mean, meaning the applicant, or a neighbor, or anybody else. Thirdly, um, third, ah, please don't speak from the audience. If you want to be heard, you need to come up and speak into the mic. Okay? What's going to happen is, we'll have, we'll open the public hearing, we're going to have the city present first, the case, then we'll have the applicant speak, then we'll ask, we get to ask questions of the applicant, and then it's the citizens, and we have a sign-up list, and even if you haven't signed up, at the end of that sign-up list, I'll ask if anybody else wants to speak. Okay? And then after the citizens speak, then the applicant has the right to come up and address the concerns of the citizens, or whomever has spoken. And then we'll close the public hearing. No. We'll have a discussion and a vote, and then we'll move to the next case. So we do that three times. We could do that as much as three times tonight. Okay? So again, please be, um, please be respectful for everybody that's speaking at the dais. We want to capture all your information. When you come up, give your name, spell your last name, and your address, please. Because it goes in our meeting minutes. We just approved the last meetings, meeting minutes. You will be in those meeting minutes if you come up. So, public hearing is opened. Case number PBG-13-01, an application filed by Urban Green Development for a planned building group for 26 new residences, single-family duplexes and row houses for property-zoned residential three, R3, located at 5801 West 38th Avenue slash 4,000 Fenton Court. Did you also want me to read in the variance?
Yes, please.
Okay. Also, case number WA-13-05, an application filed by Urban Green Development for approval of setback variances for property-zoned residential three, R3, located at 5801 West 38th Avenue and 4,000 Fenton Court.
Good evening. For the record, Meredith Record Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. And before I get started, I do have a piece of correspondence that I would like to enter into the record. This came into the office after we had already distributed the packets. So we will pass those out. The applicant's already seen this, but I'll give you a chance to go ahead and look that over.
You guys ready? Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, Meredith Record Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. For the, for the first portion of this hearing, we are considering case number WA-13-05 and PBG-13-01. The applicant is requesting approval of the planned building group plan to allow multiple structures with setback variances on property-zoned R3 and NC at 5801 West 38th Avenue slash 4,000 Fenton Court. The way I've set up the staff report, I'd like you to take action on the variances first. And I would note that typically, Board of Adjustments is the body that hears variances. However, Planning Commission does have that ability when it's included with another land use case. The other thing to be mindful of is that variances are required to have a supermajority vote, instead of just a regular majority. So in this situation, with six, or seven folks in attendance, we would need six positive votes to pass the variance piece of it. So I would like to enter into the record the case file, and pack of materials, the zoning ordinance, and the contents of this digital presentation.
Accepted.
Also, I'd like to enter into the record that all notification and posting requirements have been met, therefore there's jurisdiction to make a decision on this request. So with that, I'd like to talk a little bit first about our planned building group process. This is a land use case that we don't see a whole lot. It is regulated by Section 26116 of the Development Code. And the intent of this section is to give approval to a plan that shows multiple buildings on a single parcel. So I've included the flow chart over here on this side, just for informational purposes. I would note that it does not require a neighborhood meeting, as some of our other land use cases do. Planning Commission is the decision-making body. This does not get forwarded to City Council. Any appeal of a Planning Commission decision is directly to District Court. So what doesn't a planned building group do? It doesn't change the zoning on the property. It doesn't change the permitted uses. It doesn't dictate density unless it's related to some sort of specific site design issue. And it does not address impacts such as noise. What it does do, it allows, it is a site plan review, which permits multiple buildings on a single lot. And the intent is that it addresses design issues such as building placement, building architecture, circulation and parking on the site, lighting impacts, and also buffering for adjacent uses. So that was my PBG-101. Another thing of note is, I'm going to present this a little bit different than we're typically used, so I'm going to intermingle the two, the two cases, because that's how I feel they relate to each other. And if there are pieces that I skim over and you need clarification on, please let me know, so I can back up and clarify. So, this is a 2012 aerial of the property. You can see it outlined in sort of a turquoise blue. To the west is Harlan Street. Quite a bit farther to the north is 41st Avenue. We've got Fenton Court that comes down on the north end. From Harlan, we've got 39th Place that comes and dead ends on the western property line. And 38th Avenue down on the southern property line. The property is what we call a flag lot, and that's because it's got the main body of the lot, and then an extension that extends down to 38th. That strip is 16 and a half feet wide and about 650 feet long. And the southern portion of that is zoned NC. The remainder of the property is zoned R3, which allows single-family duplex and multifamily zoning. Let's see, the property is 2.26 acres. With the addition of the, the flag pole portion, it comes out to about 2.5. So historically, it was used for the growing of carnations and other types of greenhouse plants. There are some existing buildings that you can see in the aerial still remaining on the property. There's also the original house on the property at the northeast corner of the site, which according to the county was built in 1877. And I would note that access into the property for the greenhouse use was gained from 38th Avenue, from that pole that extends to the south, thus the 38th Avenue address. I know it's a little bit confusing having the 38th Avenue address. That's why we're using a Fenton Court address as well. So this is a copy of the zoning map overlaid on the same aerial. Again, it's a 2012 picture. And the different colors on the aerial do represent some of the different zoning districts in the area. The property, the majority of the property is zoned, area is colored orange, and that designates R3 zoning. We've also got R3 zoning on the north, south, and west, with sort of a mix of single and two-family homes. And then a little bit further to the northwest, we've got some multifamily apartment buildings. To the east, sort of that yellowish ocher color designates R1A zoning, and those are primarily the lots that are fronting on Eaton Street, and they're quite a bit larger than the lots to the west. In the R3 zone district, we do allow a variety of types of residential, single-family, two-family, and multifamily. For the multifamily development, the density standard is, one unit is permitted for every 3,630 square feet, or 12 units to, to an acre. So given the 2.5 acre lot size, the property is permitted to have 26 dwelling units on it. So let's take a look at some slides. The first slide is, I was standing on the south side of 38th Avenue, looking north to that driveway, or the pole that we're calling it in the staff report. And you can see there's a house located to the east, and then a commercial strip building to the west. Here I'm moving further up the pole towards the property, again, looking north. So here I'm almost at the property. This is the gate to get into it, and you can see that existing single-family home that's in the northeast corner. I'm looking northwest here from that same axis, and you can see those existing buildings which are in disrepair. Now I'm standing on 39th Place, looking east. So this fence is on the perimeter of the property. Now I'm looking back west on 39th Place, towards Harlan, which is quite a bit off in the, in the distance. I'm on Fenton Court now, on the north side of the property, looking south. And you can see those existing single-family homes along both sides of Fenton Court. Here I'm standing right at the end of the cul-de-sac bulb, looking over the fence into the property. Again, I'm looking south. You can see those old structures over on the right-hand side of the image. This is a perspective view, compliments of Google Maps. And again, you can, it's actually a little bit better, because you can see the perspective. I've tried to notate where Fenton Court comes in and dead ends, at the north side of the property. And then over here on, is West 39th Place, and again, it dead ends on the west side. And the property's outlined in yellow. We didn't include the pole portion of it, but gives you an idea of sort of how the neighborhood lays out in the street system in the area. Again, this presentation is a little bit different than I normally do it, but I think the two requests are so intertwined that they, they need to be presented this way. So again, if there are points of clarification you need, just please let me know. Okay, so this is the first page of the planned building group plan. It shows a site plan, sort of a condensed site plan of the property. It all has our typical declarations. It's got the legal description, it's got notes about zoning, it's got a project narrative on it. It also has signature blocks for the owner, and also the city, city dignitaries who would be signing that before it's recorded. Just to help orient you, in this picture, north is to the right-hand side. So you can see the main parcel, Fenton Court comes in, right there where it dead ends, and then 39th Place is here, and we've got 38th Avenue down on the very left-hand side. Again, a planned building group entails a site plan review for a parcel that's to have more than one primary structure. And the purpose of it is to promote better overall utilization of the site through comprehensive review of elements such as circulation, access, parking, and building layout. Again, the applicant is proposing to develop a residential community with 26 units. And the unit breakdown includes seven single-family homes, including the existing house, eight duplex units in four buildings, and 11 row houses in two buildings. The majority of the structures will be two stories in height. As we indicated earlier, there are variances that are required to support the proposed design. In the R3 zone district, we do allow a variety of types of housing units. Those include single-family, duplexes, fourplexes, all the way on up to large apartment complexes. And the setbacks vary slightly based on what type of structure it is. For example, the minimum side yard setback for a single-family home in the R3 district is five feet, but a multifamily home, or multifamily building is a 15-foot requirement. Likewise, it's a 10-foot setback for a single-family home, but the multifamily building requires a 15-foot setback. There is one consistency, and that is that all buildings, whether it's a side setback, or a front setback, or a rear setback, that above a public street do have to have a 25-foot setback. What we've tried to show on this, this exhibit is, we've taken the site plan, and let me help orient you again. Now this time, north is, is to the top. So this is Fenton Court as it comes in, curves around with 39th Place right here. We've tried to show the We've tried to show those buildings that cannot meet that 25-foot setback. And I'll just quickly go through those. Building A, which is one of the single-family homes, it's proposed to have a 6 and 1/2-foot setback. Building B, which is one of the buildings that's got the town or the row houses in it, is requested, they requested a 10-foot setback for that, again, from 25 feet. Building C is the eastern portion of one of the duplex units. And again, they're proposing a 10-foot setback. And Building D, this last one, is one of the single-family homes, and they're requesting a 10-foot setback. So that takes a specific set of criteria that we use to evaluate it, but I wanted to show how it lays out and where those specific variances are requested. There's no variances requested around the perimeter. I did note that we do need a supermajority of vote to approve that, which would be six folks out of seven on the commission. This is the second sheet of the development plan. It is the landscape plan. And again, it shows the body, the large parcel, and then over on the site, it's got the two strips of pathway which make up the pole area. And again, currently Fenton Court and 39th Place dead end at the property boundaries. And as shown on the plan, they continue into the site and intersect and will be dedicated as a public right-of-way. They're showing 47 feet of right-of-way width, and that would be dedicated by the plat document. The flag pole portion, which again is that piece that extends down to 38th, measures 16 and 1/2 feet wide by about 646 feet long. And while it's historically provided access to the site when it was used as a greenhouse, it's not wide enough to accommodate vehicular traffic to the project in accordance to today's standards. And instead, the developer is proposing to improve this strip with landscaping and a path to provide pedestrian access down to 38th Avenue. Landscaping in the city code is dictated by section 26502, and it establishes landscape standards for residential development. It's a little bit different for single-family versus multifamily because we've got a mix of unit styles on this one. We did apply the multifamily standards, which are more stringent than those for single-family. So the plan is showing 30% landscaping, or the requirement, excuse me, is 30% minimum landscaping with what they're proposing is 42% coverage. At this point, no perimeter fence has been proposed, although I have had several of the neighbors, one to the east and several to the south, who have indicated they would like to see some sort of six-foot-high buffering fence. Again, landscape amenities within the development include the construction of the path down to 38th Avenue. They've also shown a playground and a dog park area. As far as quantities for landscaping, we do require a certain number of street trees along the street, and then also additional trees and shrubs. And I would point out that they do exceed both of those numbers. The single and two-family units can have their own small yard area, and fencing is allowed in those. All of the units have two covered parking spaces in garages. And to compensate for the lack of street parking, the development is proposing 15 visitor spaces. And the single-family homes at the northwest, which is in this area, do have a couple additional spaces that they can use. Okay, moving along. This is a close-up of the street layout. They're showing how it is configured, coming in from the north side with Fenton Court and then coming around the curb into 39th Place. And it does show the improvements that would be built with the project. Because 39th Place is substandard, being only 30 feet in width, the new roadway section would have to taper into it to allow the extension of the existing attached sidewalk. And we've been working on a design with that. I would point out that Fenton Court is a full-width street, 50 feet of right-of-way, and then they also have the cul-de-sac bulb at the end. There's been a lot of discussion about the street system and how it goes into the site and through it. And, you know, we looked at different configurations. In either scenario, we could have said, "Well, you know what? We're going to allow Fenton Court to come in and have a cul-de-sac bulb, but there's not going to be any access to 39th Place." Or we could have said, "Well, you know what? We're going to create a cul-de-sac bulb on 39th Place and not have any access to Fenton Court." And part of the reason we didn't do that, we have two accesses into the property, not only for fire access, but it also allows two points of entering and exiting, which disperses the traffic instead of localizing it on either Fenton Court or 39th Place. It's quite a bit more equitable and a better design from City Staff's perspective. And again, because of the large piece of right-of-way that takes up the interior of the property, we've had, there've had to been some concessions with the setbacks. If we had done those cul-de-sac bulb configurations on either from 39th Place or Fenton, we probably wouldn't have the setback issues on those units that are adjacent to the street. The setback variances are interior to the site. Instead of requesting variances around the perimeter, the applicant chose a layout which is more contemporary in nature with a shallower front yard, consistent street edge, and increased buffering along the perimeter. And again, the flag pole piece that extends down to 38th Avenue can be used for density, but really is not big enough to be used for anything. So again, that creates somewhat of an issue trying to get a design that works, meeting all the requirements. There are some upgraded design features in the development, which includes increased landscaping, open space amenities, and covered parking for all the units. And then again, staff would recommend that based on requests from the neighborhood that there be a six-foot perimeter fence around the main portion of the site, not the pole piece that goes down to 38th. So Sheet 4 of the plan set is a photometric plan. We like to see how things will be lighted, and so they've included in their fixtures with the location as well as what they will look like. The numbers on the main plan are foot candle readings. And pursuant to our code, it calls that there be very minimal light spillover from the project and that those foot candle readings around the perimeter be as close to zero as possible. Okay. So in addition to the zoning and development code and the R3 standards that we follow, one of the guiding documents that we use for reviewing new development is the Architectural and Site Design Manual. The Architectural and Site Design Manual specifies desired attributes for multifamily development. It does not apply to single-family or duplex construction, but there are some thematic architectural elements that they have worked into all the different unit types, and those would include the use of hard coat, stucco, lap siding, metal accents. And we think that taking those not only from the multifamily and extending those to the single and two-family, there will be a cohesion and it'll look like a compatible development. There's other common design elements such as the use of shed-style roofs that you can see in this picture, and patios and entrance canopies. Many of the proposed improvements in the site are consistent with desired development attributes identified in the ASDM. Those include increased pedestrian connectivity, both on the street and throughout the site. The development also again shows upgraded landscaping around the perimeter, open space amenities with a playground, dog park, and then the path connection to 38th Avenue. So this is another elevation of the row homes. You can see it's double-story, and there are garage doors that face, that do not face the street. And these are a little bit taller, just another design. Let me back up one. Okay. In addition to the zoning code and the Architectural and Site Design Manual, we also have another policy document that we draw from, and I'd like to talk a little bit about what that is. It's called the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy. This was adopted by the city in 2005, and it laid out a series of goals for the city of Wheat Ridge to become, again, a community of choice. So staff has concluded that the application meets the broader goals identified in the NRS for encouragement, encouraging investment in the property, creation of new housing stock, and thoughtful residential design. We think that the variety of homes offered in the development will provide additional home purchase choices for the contemporary buyer, and that development of a previously blighted property should have a positive impact on the neighborhood, both aesthetically and investment-wise. As I indicated before, property is zoned R3. R3 allows anything from single-family to two-family to apartment complexes. What we tried to do with this drawing here was to do a multifamily development analysis. And so what we've done is taken the lot, and, which is this piece right here. We've got Fenton Court that comes in. This time, this is the north perspective, but it's on the left-hand side of the page. Harlan's down here, and 39th Place comes into the property from the west. So what we've tried to do is make some assumptions that if they did not do sort of this mix of residential styles, this is what could be built. So property is zoned R3. They are allowed 26 residential units. This drawing represents apartment units. This would be the building right here. This would be the surface parking, which would be about 60 surface spaces, and a height restriction of 35 feet. So again, another three-story building, which is quite a bit higher than most of the developments surrounding it. We think that the proposed development with the mix of uses, including the single-family and two-family, is much more consistent with development in the neighborhood. Most of the neighborhood was built in the 40s and 50s, and it includes the mix of single-family duplexes and multifamily. And we think our staff does conclude that this type of design that's being proposed by this plan is much more compatible than what we'd see if we had just a big old apartment building built. We also did a perspective drawing, again, based on some assumptions. The zoning's R3, we all know that. We still have Fenton Street, or Fenton Court, excuse me, coming in from the north, and 39th Place coming from the west. But this time, it's with an apartment building, again, 26 units in an apartment building, three stories high, a whole lot of surface parking. And you can see the scale of some of these adjacent houses. They're probably not exactly correct, but just to give you an idea, these are probably ranch-type houses. And again, we are thinking that this type of development that we're seeing on the screen here is probably not consistent with the neighborhood. And we think that, based on the mix of uses, that the project that's being proposed as is far more compatible, not only with use, but also the zoning and kind of the style of what's being built. So let's see. Agency referrals. We did refer this application out to all the service agencies. All of them indicated that they can serve with improvements installed at the developer's expense. Wheat Ridge Sanitation does have an eight-foot main, which must be accommodated, and that's also shown on the plat document. The Wheat Ridge Police Department has no concerns with the development. The Wheat Ridge Parks Commission is requesting fees in lieu of improvements instead of compensating for the public access. They want a cash payment. The Wheat Ridge Fire District can serve the property. They have requested a 20-foot access drive to the existing house, so that's a slight modification that would have to be done on the design. And Public Works has reviewed drainage and traffic plans, and they've concluded that the existing street network can handle the traffic generated by the 26 new units. So staff recommends approval of the variances for the following reasons. They're internal to the site. We feel that they should not alter the character of the area based on the existing mix of land uses. We believe that the variances will not be detrimental to public safety and welfare. We believe the proposed design provides a better traffic arrangement, given that we've got two ways into the subdivision instead of concentrating all the traffic onto one of those separate streets. We believe that the site enhancements that are being proposed compensate for the setback reductions. We believe construction is consistent with both Architectural and Site Design Manual and the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, and that a majority of the criteria used to evaluate a variance do support this request. We're also recommending approval of the Plan Building Group Plan for the following reasons. We believe the site plan is less impactful and in character with the neighborhood than a traditional apartment multifamily construction. We believe construction is consistent, again, with the ASDM and the NRS, and that the application is in compliance with the evaluation criteria. We do have three conditions that we're attaching. First of all, the applicant worked with staff on the row house designed to meet specific facade articulation and transparency requirements as required in the ASDM, that there would be a six-foot-high solid perimeter fence around the flag portion of it, and consistent with Wheat Ridge Fire that the entry drive to the existing house in that very northeast corner be widened to 20 feet. So that concludes my staff report. I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Meredith. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I see in the report that the neighbors to the east and south are requesting a six-foot height fence. On Sheet 2, there's no plant material to screen buffer the cars to the north. Are the, I guess, are the neighbors okay with this? I haven't heard anything from the, that talks about the neighbors to the north.
Well, I've talked to several of the neighbors from the north, especially the woman who lives in this house right here. We did talk about setback. I believe this structure is 10 feet setback. This is one of the single-family homes. And I think part of the design for this is to allow those folks who have the single and duplexes to be able to have a little yard space they could perhaps have a dog run in. If you feel like there needs to be additional buffering, that could be an appropriate condition of approval.
Okay, thank you. Overall, there's, I guess from my understanding, this is, it's a pretty rough plan. Is this, I guess, just for concept?
We would have to go through the building permit process where we would do a more finite. I know on the landscape plan, we don't have the materials identified or anything, so it is somewhat of a concept plan that we tighten up when we go through the building permit process.
Okay. What are the multifamily, street tree, and shrub requirements? What is?
Do you have your?
What are the multifamily, street tree, and shrub requirements along, I guess, west 39th Place?
Okay. Well, the street trees, and this actually shows the street as it moves through the development from south to west. The street tree requirement in a tree lawn is one tree for every 35 feet. So that's what these trees represent, are those street trees. Then there are additional trees and shrubs, which are basically for every 1,000 square feet of required landscape area, they have to provide one additional tree and 10 additional shrubs. And I have those numbers if you...
So can those, I guess, can those numbers, I mean, when I look at the plan, it's obvious that if I just take the linear distance, there's not enough trees in the street lawn. It's missing trees.
Okay.
And probably by about, I calculate, we're probably four short.
Well...
Or are those trees able to move out of the street lawn next to the building?
Part of one of the issues is we take out driveways. So everywhere there's a drive cut, that piece gets removed from that 35-foot spacing.
I calculated without the driveways. I calculated only the street lawn, no driveways, just the linear distance, just going at every 30 feet. And it looks like we're probably about at least four trees. So if you could...
Well, we can check that.
Yeah, if we could verify that.
Sure.
And then I think that's the only, I guess, is there any, what's going on with the detention pond? How deep is that?
Well, actually, at the staff table, I've got Mark Westberg, who is our Public Works Project Supervisor, supervisor, and also Lauren Michelak, one of the other planners. Project Supervisor, supervisor, and also Lauren Michelak, one of the other planners to help field questions. So, Mark, are you ready to talk about drainage, or?
Yes.
Okay, and so, let me go. I, I do have drainage plan loaded. He's a little shy, doesn't want to come up to the podium. Well, it's not included, or we have it.
So, so what they've proposed to do because of, of having limited green space on the site to, to do something like a pond, they want to have the area be more active. They proposed an underground system, which is actually located at this location, and I'm not going very good up and down here. But it's a series of five-and-a-half-foot diameter pipes that are underground. It's very similar to what 7-Eleven's putting in on 38th and Harland right now. They did an underground detention system also. So, it's a similar kind of thing. It's caught a couple of manholes to access, so you can clean it out. I can't stand up down there, but a lot of people can.
Will, will there be any, on sheet two, the landscape plan, it shows a, a playground structure. Sometimes some of those playgrounds have footings. Will there be any conflict with that playground structure being in that detention pond?
You know, there's, there's a decent amount of room between the individual pipes, so they'd have to make sure they, they put it in between and not on top of. I'm not, I haven't looked at the details. They've just sort of shown up area drawing, but we don't have a cross-section or anything yet. That would come with final plans. But we can certainly, you know, watch out for that sort of thing, and hopefully they'll know their pond is there, and they don't do that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Scott?
No more questions for staff.
Monica? Steve?
Just a couple of questions, please. Starting with the existing house that's on the property from 1877, do you know the status or the condition of that house?
I, I do not. I have not been in it. Just from my observation, looking at the buildings, they seem pretty decrepit, but I, I'll let the applicant go into that. They have proposed keeping it.
Right.
So, I assume there's got to be some existing value.
And then, in both the applicant's narrative and in, in your staff report, talk about contamination on the site. Can you explain what contamination is there to your knowledge and understanding?
Right. Well, it's typical when you have a greenhouse use that there were some sort of pesticides or herbicides that were used during the growing process, especially back, kind of back in the day. I know they've done a phase one, if not a phase two environmental on it. And so, as part of the development process, they would be obligated to clean up the site before there's new construction. And again, I'll probably defer that back to the applicant, but it's typical what we see, you know, being the Carnation City, we've had a lot of greenhouse sites, and they all seem like they've got those issues.
Couple of questions on city standards. The first one deals with the, the pole, the flag pole, the access to 38th. So, you mentioned that it's currently 16 and a half feet in width?
Yes.
What, what would be the current, I guess, city standard if that were to be a two-way access point? How wide would that need to be by current city engineering standards?
If we're a dedicated public street, we'd probably expect it to be 45 to 50 feet wide of right-of-way. For a private access, or even a fire access, the minimum requirement's 22 feet.
Okay.
So, so like I say, we don't consider it a viable option for an official access to the property.
And then, can you let us know what the city standard is for parking for multifamily residences?
And I might look at Lauren here. It's based on the number of bedrooms. So, when she did the mock-up on, using SketchUp on the apartment complex, we made the assumption that they were all two-bedroom units, and is it two?
So, like Meredith said, the parking standard for multifamily residential, which would in this case apply to, for instance, the townhomes, so more than two units. It's a one-and-a-half space per one-bedroom unit, two spaces for two or three-bedroom units, two-and-a-half spaces for four or more bedroom units, and then we have a ratio for visitor parking, so one additional per 10 spaces for visitors. So, based on bedrooms.
So, do we know, do we know the number of bedrooms for those townhomes yet?
No.
And would it be, and for the guest parking, you said that's one for every 10 additional units, or 10 additional parking spaces?
For every 10 spaces that you end up with based on bedrooms, one per 10 for visitors.
Okay. Question about neighborhood meeting?
Sure.
You mentioned earlier in the staff report that, or your presentation, that a neighborhood meeting's not required as part of this application. Has there been a neighborhood meeting?
There was not a city-mandated meeting. I know at some point, the developer was proposing to meet with the neighborhood. I did receive a lot of emails and phone calls, and all of those comments were forwarded to the applicant. Not sure if they made contact or not, and again, that would be.
The staff has not attended any neighborhood meetings for this site?
We have not.
Okay. You talk about the fire protection in your staff report, the improvements to fire protection. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Typically, with a property that needs to be developed, there are, especially when there's streets that just dead-end, I don't know what they did with the greenhouse, but it's fairly typical that we refer it to the, the appropriate fire district. In this case, it's Wheat Ridge. So, typically, they will require line extensions, and obviously, service lines, and also the installation of hydrants. And again, this is somewhat of a concept plan, so we're still working out what exactly those details are, but they did review and comment back and said they could serve the property.
There's a question, or not a question, there's a, some language in here about the park fee?
Yes.
And a fee in lieu. There was questions about potentially dedicating that little pole, and then the Parks Commission said, can you elaborate on that?
Well, and I actually had kind of deferred most of that to the subdivision, because it's really the subdivision.
We can talk about that as.
But I, but I can address it. So, so, so what happens is we, when we have a new, particularly a subdivision for new residential development, we always refer, refer the case to our Parks Commission to try to do an assessment of impacts from the new development. The requirement is that there be X amount of land space dedicated per new resident, but typically, Wheat Ridge doesn't have sort of the large developments like Stapleton or North Fields that would allow us to get any sort of, sort of usable park space. The developer had proposed that the strip that goes down to 38th be landscaped, landscaped and improved, and that those improvements then would allow it to be used for public access, and that could count towards their parkland fee. We went to the Parks Commission, and for a variety of reasons, they didn't think it would really serve as a public benefit. It would be more of a benefit to the subdivision and the people who live there. So, they made, made the recommendation to not allow to count those improvements towards the parkland fee. Does that make sense? So, they want all cash. As far as I am aware, the developer still does intend on making improvements to that strip, but it will be a private amenity.
Dick?
Yeah, just a, a couple of quick questions. I assume that there's going to be a homeowners' association on this, because there are quite a bit of common area that needs to be maintained. There are some amenities there, the park, the playground, the dog park, the pocket park, et cetera. When I think of a park, I think of something that's open to the public, but this, in fact, will not be open to the public.
Those are private amenities.
Those are private amenities and not public parks.
Correct.
Amanda?
I was just curious if the applicant did consider applying for the PRD. I noticed that you noted in the, the packet here that if they rezoned PRD, they actually could put 46 homes on the property.
Yeah, that was one of the things we debated with, were what were the benefits of staying with the R3 zoning, even though you've got a lesser density allowed. It's a more timely approval. The PRD would be a zone change, which would take significantly longer, probably more like, you know, five to six months to go through the process. They also have more, there's more chances that a zone change could end up with a legal protest based on objections from the, of the adjacent property owners. That could have been one of the reasons why they didn't pursue that. I'm not exactly sure.
Sure. Thank you. Alan?
Meredith, was, was this property ever zoned agricultural, or did it enter with the city zoned R3?
Right. We checked our historical zoning maps, and it's always been R3.
Okay, so that if there was a Carnation greenhouse there, it was basically a non-conforming use?
Well, I mean, the, the zoning code has kind of morphed. My recollection way back when, when I started here, greenhouses were permitted in the, in the residential zone districts. Then they became special uses, and then they were sort of written out as a dying breed.
Also, this might be a more appropriate question for the applicant, but I'll ask you, just because we've got the exhibit here, on, on sheet two, which is mostly a landscaping plan. I think it's what's up here on the screen. There are, the, the plan is divided up into four quadrants, phase one over in the upper right-hand quadrant, and then going around clockwise, phase two, phase three, phase four. Can you explain that, what those phases mean? Are we talking about different phases of building development, of landscaping planting? What are we talking about?
It would be, at least my understanding, building development. However, it would be policy, and it is the city's policy, that all the public improvements would have to be put in first before anything comes out of the ground.
And would that, would that also include the development of the sort of parkway, walkway up to 38th? Would that be included in that?
I, I will defer.
Okay. And when you looked at the structure, it was kind of hard to tell in the photos. Is that existing house a, a two-story structure, or is it just a single story at this time?
It's a single story.
Okay.
Let's see if I can get that up. Is that it? No. It's a little hard to see. Single story right now.
All right. Because the, all of the materials talk about how all of the units are two-story units. So, I was wondering if that, if I should take that to mean that something's, they're going to add a second story to that house? Well, at least, yeah, at least two-story, but there's a, there's a three-story rowhouses there, too.
There are as well.
Okay. All right, those are all the questions I have. Thanks.
Meredith, I, yeah, I have just a couple of questions. The improvements to bring in the water and Public Works, will those affect both Fenton and 39th Place?
My understanding is there's already water and sewer that traverse the site, so I don't know that there's any additional work that needs to be done for the water and the sewer. And those, those are not city entities, so we'd have to work with the district on them as we go through final plans. There is a storm sewer planned down Fenton from the site down to, the nearest storm drain is, is on 41st. So, I know in the Platte staff report, it talks about an existing storm sewer on Fenton, but the nearest storm drain is actually on 41st.
Okay. And then, which water company supports this?
This is Wheat Ridge Water, I believe.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And I just had one other question. Sorry, I lost it. Nope, that's it. Thank you. So, now is the time for the applicant to speak. Unless anybody has any further question? No. Does the applicant wish to speak? Come on up. So, when you come up, please give your name, spell your last name and your address. Either, in your case, business address is fine. Here we go.
Thank you. Keith Gallegos, G-A-L-L-E-G-O-S. Address is 621 Seventeenth Street, Suite 1777, Denver, Colorado 80293.
Thank you.
I'm Keith Gallegos from Urban Green Development, and just want to share a little bit with, with you all about who we are, what we do, and why we do it. Urban Green Development, also known as UGD, is a consciously-aligned team of real estate developers, entrepreneurs, and financiers. We are united by our belief that business has a responsibility to actively affect positive change in the communities in which we operate. We have more than 80 years of combined experience, and accept nothing less above the highest standard. What we do, UGD creates, designs, and develops smart, environmentally responsible, real estate projects. Our developments are designed and built with a strong sense of community and sustainability. From initial acquisition to final closings, we conscientiously steward the land in our charge. We specialize in building modern, urban, green, affordable, and energy-efficient residential units and mixed-use projects. We make a positive sustained impact on the homeowners who buy our homes, the businesses who occupy our commercial spaces, and the communities and environment in which we build and live. Why we do it? We want to make a long-term difference in the community, environment, and the lives of our buyers. We know the only way to inspire the change we want to see in the world is to be it. Our mission, as one of the first certified B corporations in the United States for real estate development, Urban Green Development operates under the corporate concept of linked prosperity. Our conscious business practices are guided by three interrelated missions. Economic mission, development mission, and community mission. Our economic mission is to run the company profitably for us and our partners and vendors to share in the profits with our team and the communities in which we build. Our development mission is to create smart, sustainable, urban real estate projects that make a long-term difference to the environment, the community, and the buyer. And our community mission is to operate with the understanding that business plays an important role in the advancement and growth of society through development and implementation of innovative ideas, products, and processes. The undercurrent beneath these missions is a driving force to continually challenge our processes, to develop the most innovative, sustainable urban real estate possible. That's UGD. I'd now like to introduce Mark Young, our development advisor. He'll address the technical aspects of our submittal and answer any questions that you might have.
Hi, I'm Mark Young, 621 Seventeenth Street, Suite 1777, Denver, Colorado. And you had a number of questions that I'd like to try to address. If you'd like to re-ask the questions, or I can try to remember them. How's that? Okay. So, if, if you have some specific questions, I'd like to, to take those questions, or I can, I can try to remember them.
We'll go around again. So, Scott?
Thank you. The first one is just a little bit of clarification on Exhibit 1 narrative. It states that we are not asking for any variances. I don't see a data on there. I'm assuming that you changed your mind down the road after that document?
So, that came before. Our initial assumption was when we went through the planned building group, that the site plan would be approved as drawn, and we didn't understand that if there was something that was varied from the code, that we had to specifically call out and ask for that variance. So, that's why we had to come back and say, we're asking for these variances.
Okay. The next one is, in Exhibit 8, page 21, last paragraph, it states, instead of a central area for mail, mail will be directly delivered to the residences. I, I've heard the words about steward the land, sustainability, environmental responsibility, so if you could explain the, instead of having a mail kiosk to having it now delivered to everybody, what was the?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, my thought would have been we'd have a mail kiosk. I didn't know that we were asking to have mail delivered to each individual house.
The next question is on Exhibit 5, the site plan. The narrative is, is misspelled, but it states, "Urban Green Development's vision for a conscious, sustainable community in Denver." I think that you meant that to be Wheat Ridge, correct?
So, I'm, again, I'm sorry, I'm not sure. I don't know that I wrote that. But we do, we do developments all over. But we do developments all over. We're not just Wheat Ridge-centric, although I can tell you that it's been very comforting working with everybody, with the staff here.
Some of the comments that I saw had to do with the water, and I wanted to look at just the statement on Exhibit Five, the site plan states that, it talks about water savings, zero escaping with plants that require a little or no watering. And then I look on Sheet Two, the landscape plan, the grass square foot accounts for 54% of the landscape area, which is under the 60% maximum, but over 50% for single, two-family residences. Grass is typically the highest use of water in the landscape. What type of grass were you considering?
So I don't know the specific type of grass, but I do know some of the thought process and what is behind that. One of the things that Wheat Ridge does that I think is fairly progressive when it comes to land development, it allows us to contour the land in such a way that a lot of the drainage and water quality is taken up in the grass areas. And so we were able to use more grass in this development than we are in other developments because of that.
Okay. And then just a comment on that, the grass, it looks like the grass area has, appears to have a lot of acute angles, which will create significant inefficiencies in watering, so just to make you aware of that.
So I know that we use a lot of very sophisticated sprinkling systems and drip lines and things like that, and, you know, it's not bulk watering that we do, we do spot-specific watering.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I had, thank you.
Ms. Duran?
Yes, I have one question. It says here that even though PBG does not require a neighborhood meeting, it is your intention to host a meeting during the third week of April. Did you guys have that meeting?
So we did not have the meeting, and the reason we didn't have the meeting was because we actually had this presentation scheduled two weeks before, and we didn't feel like that gave us enough time to get the meeting in. And then when the meeting, when this meeting was postponed to today's date, we didn't have enough time to put it together. We have spoken to a number of the neighbors, every neighbor that's reached out to us, we've talked to, I've talked to several myself, and then we've responded through Meredith as well on any questions they had. We're very open and willing and happy to meet with the neighbors, and in fact, I believe where we could, every neighborhood request, we can accommodate. The six-foot perimeter fence is not a problem. Somebody expressed an interest about making sure the Fox family was taken care of, and we assured them that we'd take care of that. So any of the, you know, even after, and it's hard for me to say that, but even after approval, part of us being a B corporation is taking care of all the people to the best of our ability. You know, and in fact, we're going to be audited and graded as employees, Keith and I, on how well we do that.
So you would still be willing to meet with them and listen to their concerns?
Yes, one of the primary concerns. It's interesting, one of the primary concerns that everybody had was the traffic. You know, we had a traffic study done, it talked about how the, where the loads were going to be, and as Meredith pointed out, you know, do we take access off of Fenton only, and then all the traffic goes up Fenton? Do we take the access off of 39th Place only, and then all the traffic goes down 39th Place? This seemed to be the direction that staff directed us in this traffic plan. But one of the things that I assured the neighbors while we were in conversation beforehand, that construction traffic would predominantly use that panhandle, West 38th. We've discussed ways of managing the traffic during construction, one way before noon, the other way afternoon, trying to limit the impact of the construction traffic. That phasing plan that you saw was also done in such a way that we were trying to relieve the burden from the individual, from the landowners, trying to phase it so that we move the construction in a southerly direction to reduce the impact on them, on their enjoyment of their homes.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Thank you for your coming in tonight. Couple of questions I asked about the original house and the condition of that.
So the original house is in very good condition, it's been remodeled a couple of times, the exterior walls are very thick, it's all masonry and brick, the interior is in pretty good shape. We're going to do a remodel on the inside, not having to affect much of it. Typical for 1877 and these sort of little remodels, there's one bathroom, not really a master bedroom, that sort of thing. So we'll be upgrading the interior of the house and adjusting the exterior to match the facades of the existing houses, of the new houses we're going to be building. Part of being urban green, we reuse, we renew, and it's part of our MO to preserve that house.
Will you be adding a second story to that?
We will not be adding a second story to the house.
The contamination that's on the property, staff said that you had done a, performed a Phase One and a Phase Two?
We did.
What are the results of that?
So there were significant amounts of Darlin and DDT, and essentially what happened is, as they would harvest the carnations, they'd throw the trays out into the yard. There's about 38,000 square feet of contaminated soil out there. We need to remove between six and eight inches across the 38,000 square feet. This is also one of the things that we do, we've actually already applied for our permit to do that work, regardless of the approval process we go through, that work is commencing and going forward.
For the removal of that dirt, will you be utilizing that pole portion on the 38th?
Yes, we will, yes. We've asked the contractor, I believe it's actually in their contract, that they are not to disturb the neighbors, to use that. Now, I can't promise that there wouldn't be an occasional truck that would go up Fenton. There won't be, I believe, any access to 39th Street yet during that contamination removal. We've hired a company called EAS, they're very professional, they do a lot of cleanup work like this. As part of what we do, we actually looked at biological ways of cleaning it up, if we could put enzymes and different sort of bacteria into the soil to do it that way, and it wasn't practical. Apparently this Darlin is a very, 40, 50, 60 years later, it's still just as strong as it was before. So it's a tough one to deal with. I believe that the dirt is taken, is being taken to a landfill in Golden where it will be incinerated.
A question on the elevations, which were, I believe, in the rear sheets of our plan building group. You have, I think on the townhomes, you have what's called an art wall?
Yes.
What, can you elaborate on what that is and the intent behind that?
So our architecture tends to be a little thematic. You know, we have, part of being urban green, we do urban infill projects, we've built a lot in the Highlands and in other areas in Denver, and we tend to put sort of a label on it. And the art wall is a metal facade that we can use to decorate in a certain way to create a theme through the project. So it's sort of our stamp.
I assume that as you're working through this site, you've performed a pro forma with it, this isn't directly 100% related to development, but I know it's on everyone's mind, what are your price points you're looking at for these different types of housing units?
So we price things several different ways, and one of the things I want to make sure that everybody understands, when we build a house, there's a lot that goes into building a house. You know, you can build it, you know, quick, down and dirty, or you can build it very efficiently. We build houses that are very efficient. I don't know if anybody is familiar with hers ratings, but in the 80s, 90s, hers ratings were in the 80, 90 range. The houses that we build are often in the 20s and 30s, which means that they're, that we build them tight, ventilate right, and I can't remember the rest of the poem. But we have, and we also put solar panels on the roof of all the houses we build. So we reduce the electric costs, there's not a direct, like, a lot of our homes, people don't even make a payment to Excel Energy. That's part of being urban green. So that does add a little bit of the cost to the home, but it's, and the reason I prefaced this was because it reduces the operating cost of the home, it reduces the maintenance that's required in the home, so it's much more livable. We are looking at about $190 a foot for the single-family homes. I believe that works out to be high threes, low fours on the single-family homes. I think we're looking on the patio homes of the duplexes in the 350 range, and the townhomes, I believe, are in the 290 to 310 range.
And then I have one final question, and this, it could be premature, but I'll bring it up. Regarding the guest parking, and then maybe this is more of a CCNR, HOA covenant thing, RV parking, boat parking, camper parking, things of that nature, what, because space is somewhat limited in terms of extra spaces for guests and so forth, do you have any proposed restrictions or anything like that on that?
So as we get into the HOA documents, we will, and the project is, will be FHA approved, so the financing will be available from a number of different sources. We will, and that sort of, I prefaced that by saying, because that mandates a lot of what goes into our HOA documents. We are not allowing for vehicles over a certain width, over a certain height. We would not allow boat parking unless you could put it in the garage. Those sorts of things would be incorporated into the HOA. And if you don't have another question, I'd like to elaborate on something I think you asked Meredith, that I'd like to talk about just briefly, and that is that one of the things that we've done that I think is very advantageous for this project, the closest fire hydrant to Fenton right now is way up on 41st, way out on the end of 41st Place. We're going to be putting two or three fire hydrants into the site. We're also going to be looping the water system. I don't know how technical you guys are, but most municipalities require looped water systems. That maintains water pressure, reduces maintenance to the system, and by us looping the water line that comes in from West 39th to Fenton Court, we're going to actually be improving the water process and the water quality for everybody in the neighborhood. By looping the street the way we've done, we've provided great emergency vehicle access. I don't, I can't tell you definitively, but I believe that homeowners insurance, that one of the qualifications, one of the price scales is how far away are you from a fire hydrant? We'll be improving the neighborhood for safety, health safety, for livability, and lifestyle, all the way around. So anyway.
Thank you very much.
Dick? Amanda? Yes?
I just wanted to repeat my question about the sort of phasing that's there on the Exhibit Five, Page Two, Phase One, Two, Three, and Four. Are, do the, what, can you tell me what those phases refer to on the document?
Primarily what they refer to is our plan for construction. Phase One would be the first, now, when we're talking about construction, we're talking about vertical construction. All the improvements we've made first and foremost. The water system, sewer system, all the mains, the electrical system, cable, everything will go in first. And then we'll begin construction in Phase One, then move to Phase Two, then to Phase Three, and then to Phase Four. That's also significant for our FHA financing, so that, so people can qualify for FHA loans. You have to, you can't just throw 26 units on the market at one time, or else you won't qualify. We also adopted that phasing plan because we thought it would be the best for the neighborhood, have the lowest impact on the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
And I have just a couple of questions. So you're going to remove about 38,000, about six to eight inches off of 38,000 square feet. Are you going to replace that?
So what we do is the site is going to be dirt positive when we do the foundations, we're putting basements in there, and so we're not going to be replacing until, or as we go with the project.
Okay. And then there was a question of parking for the multifamily and the number of bedrooms?
Right. So the patio, the townhomes that we've defined, designed right now, and we're ready to go to permit on every one of these products. So we've got them ready to go, we're waiting for the approval process so we can make our submittals. Phase One will be hopefully permitting, you know, within weeks. And to answer your question, there's two bedrooms for each one of the patio homes, townhomes, I'm sorry about that. We have more parking on the site than what's required by the city. We've exceeded the standards in landscaping, in landscapable area. It's really part of what urban green is. We have more trees, more shrubs, play areas. And there was an interesting question about those parks being public or private. I don't, I know that as urban green, we wouldn't have a problem at all in making those available to everybody in the neighborhood, everybody in the neighborhood. And I understand, when we were asking about the park money, to give you, everybody, an idea of what that is, the investment that Urban Green is making, I've been told it's about $7,000 per unit. So we'll be putting about $160,000 into the park system. The code, Wheat Ridge code, allows for, sort of requires that all that money be spent within a three-quarter mile of the project. Now, there's very nice parks in the neighborhood already. We, when we create open space, what do you want to do with it? You know, we can have it as a field where you can go play football, or you can put something in it, and many of the, you know, like a dog park, or, you know, playground equipment or something like that. We went to the underground storage for our detention. If anybody here thinks that's the cheap way to go, let me tell you, it is not the cheap way to go. We chose that process because it kept the area, the ground intact, it kept it usable. That's part of being urban green. And so, maybe I got off the track when I was answering your question, but if we were allowed to use some of the funding, and Planning Board has the authority to authorize more than 50% of the money that's generated from the site to be used on the site, if we could use that money to improve those parks, we'd be very happy to make it open to the public. It's hard for me to encumber, a homeowners association has to maintain the park if, in fact, everybody else gets to use it.
Cool, thank you. I think, I believe, oh, one last, by any chance, since you're urban green, are these buildings LEED certified?
So we don't typically use LEED certification.
Residential?
The reason we don't, well, but we have pursued LEED certification for the project as a whole.
Okay.
So we can get project certification. But I want you to know that LEED certification, in my mind, is sort of like fair trade coffee, you pay for the sticker and you get it. We build above LEED standards. Everything we do is above LEED standards. Our insulation, our roofing material, our wall thicknesses, our framing methods, our solar panels, the way we heat the homes and cool the homes, everything we do, you'd be surprised at the livability of the homes. That's what urban green is.
And I'm not, I'm not just arguing LEED, I know there's an overhead to getting that little plaque, so I was just wondering what your response was. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, are you done?
I'd like to just add a couple of points of clarification. As far as Commissioner Ollm asked about the street trees, we checked the plan, it does meet it, taking out driveways and site triangles, so we did check that right now. So we're good there. And then as far as the parks fee goes, that's going to be one of the things that City Council makes a determination on, will present, kind of like we did to the Parks Commission, and let them make that final decision.
I understand.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We will now hear from the citizens. So as I mentioned earlier, we're going to call the names as they're listed. After a while, if somebody who's spoken before you has said the exact same thing that you said, you can stand up, I can read your name, and you can agree, you can say, I agree, or you can come on up, it's up to you. I would ask, we have a lot of people here, be frugal with your time, folks, or else we're going to be here quite a while. Do we know which sheet was the first sheet?
I don't.
Okay, I'm going to do the first. Ron Olin. Hi, Ron? First name, last name, address, spell your last name, thank you.
First name Ron, last name Olin, O-L-I-N. I live at 3940 Harland, and I am the property owner. Having reviewed the city plans with Meredith and had discussions, dropping things, excuse me, I have put together two petitions. me, I have put together two petitions to present you tonight. One petition is for the right-of-way that they brought up, and the second petition is for variances that they brought up. And so, I'm not sure how I'm supposed to address it, but I have two original petitions, and I'll read them into, I guess... The first petition is to deny the change of architectural and site requirements for the case listed, MS 1302. It was the case that was on my letter, and so I used that general case on both of these petitions, okay? And then, our request is that the site design would be per Section 26-211, residential, R3 district, and that the stated heights, coverage, minimum lot areas, minimum lot widths, front yard setbacks, minimum side yard setbacks, and minimum rear yard setbacks would be strictly enforced by the Planning Commission and by the staff, which goes against what staff has proposed. And one of the ones that you can clearly see is on Exhibit 6 in your packet. Building B has a front setback of 10 feet. Our law says that that setback needs to be 25 feet. And, so that's a huge setback difference, and in doing so, it would impact the size of that structure that's going on there quite a bit. And the same is true with the other three setbacks that you can see here in green, where they listed them as 6 feet, 10 feet. The 10 feet would be 15 feet requirements, and the 6 foot, I believe was a 15 foot requirement also, could be 10. I'm not, Meredith, I'd have to defer that to Meredith, but she's shaking her head, yes, so I assume that's, I'm somewhat stating that.
Yeah, we refined the plan when they resubmitted for packets, so that changed a little bit from when you and I talked, from 10 down to 6, so.
So that is this first, and I didn't know how many copies, so I brought the original, which is what Meredith requested. I have 21 landowners on this petition. I had several more contact me as we were walking in the door, asking me if I could, if they could sign the petition here tonight. And I said no, because I already have it notarized, that I'm attesting, you know, these signatures are legitimate. So, I would like to offer that to you. The second petition that I would like to submit is to deny the change of right-of-way to 39th Place, in the same case numbers listed on here. The right-of-way dedication, we, the undersigned, are against the change of the right-of-way for 39th Place and Fenton Court. 39th Place was never intended to be a through-street, and is dedicated as a dead end, as Meredith has stated, and as it's posted on the street signs. Currently, the property access is the private driveway off of 38th Avenue. Thus, the primary address of the project is given 38th Avenue. And that flagpole becomes useless strip, I mean, for all intensive purposes. But Fenton Court is not a dead end, it's a cul-de-sac, and it's a legitimate cul-de-sac. And we would say that the property access should be off of the cul-de-sac, which is the secondary address to the site. And I have 21 attest voters and property owners signing this petition also. I grew up in Wheat Ridge. We moved to Wheat Ridge in 1953. And basically, I knew the Morrisons who owned this property. And I know that that 39th Street Avenue was closed because they wanted to build their carnation greenhouse on there, and they could not do it with that street open. And there was a lot of discussion back then about semis coming and going, and thus, the flagpole was created for those semis to enter and exit this property, and they were never allowed to come in off of 39th Place or off of Fenton Court. It was solely the flagpole, and thus, it was a private drive. One of the things that they talked about, the developer talked about, was doing a loop system with his water lines, and that does not improve water quality, that maintains water pressure on the site. And that's why the City of Wheat Ridge Water Department would want a loop system. Water quality is maintained by the filtration of the water when it's filtered, so. The other thing, the flagpole, even though we, you know, we heard that it can't be used for anything, that is being used in the calculations to allow the quantity of units that are going into the property. And so, I just want to make sure that's clear to you, that you understand that the whole use of the flagpole is adding that square footage. An identical, if we look at our plot plan up here, an identical plot just to the north of this is 37th Avenue, and that has a cul-de-sac with a center cul-de-sac and a 35-foot turning radius, says that you're going to take away about 65 feet of, to 70 feet across in a cul-de-sac, if you were to extend the cul-de-sac in off of Fenton Court. So there would be fire hydrant put in at that point, anyway. And there are sufficient fire hydrants going up and down Harland Street. In fact, there's one right across the street from my house. So, on 39th. And so, the only access for fire hydrant addition would be for coming in off of Fenton. I think that covers most of what I wanted to talk about. Thank you very much for your time.
Did anybody have any questions?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Anybody have any questions? No, thank you. Thanks for coming up.
We could hear you, too.
Guys, I was really serious about keeping it calm here. Norma Hazen? Hazen, thank you. Yes, yes. If you could say your full name, your address, and spell your last name, please, for the Thank you.
You want my last name, H-A-Z-E-N?
Thank you. And your address?
3993 Eaton Street.
Thank you.
I live east of the property. And I'm concerned about the nine evergreens I planted close to the property line more than 40 years ago. And I'm sure some of the roots are west of the property line, and it would break my heart to see the roots covered with whatever, or torn up. And it is, this is a tree city, Wheat Ridge is a tree city. Also, how high can my fence be? I have over 100 trees on my property, and my forest could attract all kinds of activity. And that kind of concerns me. And the other thing, just to be a little sarcastic, I have 3/4 of an acre. Could I build about 10 townhouses on it? I'm just being sarcastic. That's it, thank you.
Did anybody have any questions from Ms. Hazen? Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Thank you, Karen.
Karen Case, C-A-S-E. I own the property at 3871 Eaton Street. Many of my questions have been answered tonight, which I was happy about. One of the things that I noticed under agency referrals is that the Wheat Ridge Water District is not listed here. You've mentioned it a time or two, but sort of in passing, and that is not listed here as having been approved by...
They did not respond to our referral formally. We've had discussions with them, and they can serve the property. A lot of times, they base their response on the fire department's response.
I was very concerned about that. I guess, much of my concern is the density. There is nothing in the neighborhood that is that high density, as far as being in a group, particularly in the row houses, and which require them so much setback. It just lends an entirely different feel to the neighborhood, which has always been pretty much single-family, particularly to the east. I'm just wondering if there isn't some way to cut down on the density by some degree. And I was also, well, not concerned, I was curious, as to whether any of these units will be available for low-income. And that I don't think was addressed, or I didn't understand it. But I am concerned about the density, and the setbacks, and how it's going to affect the entire neighborhood. And I hope that you, you know, are very alert to that sort of thing. There's a lot of community concern about that. Any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Case? Thank you. Thanks for coming in. I apologize.
DeBello, D-E capital B-E-L-L-O.
Thank you.
And my address is 4055 Eaton Street. So, our property is right behind the house that is existed there right now. And I'm a little concerned about the fence, when you say, you know, that's a possibility. Are we talking like a chain fence, or, you know, what kind of a fence would we be talking about?
I think that's probably negotiable with the developer as to what, you know, people want to see. We'd like it to be consistent. We wouldn't want to see a 4-foot fence here, and then a 6-foot fence, and then a chain link. It would, should be consistent, but I think that's up for discussion.
And also, what about the timeline? Is there a timeline on, about how long this will take, or...
We can ask the applicant when he comes back up afterwards. We can ask him about the timeline. He did mention the four phases of construction, but not the timeline.
Some of that I wasn't able to hear, so that's why I was asking again, so.
Did you have any other, any other concerns? Thank you. I'm going against two lists here, I'm trying to be fair here.
My name's Janine Rose, R-O-S-E. My address is 5830 West 39th, and...
Could you do me a favor? Could you lift the mic so that, yeah, and then talk into it? Perfect, thanks.
Did you get my address? My name's Janine Rose. I live at 5830 West 39th Avenue.
Thank you.
R-O-S-E. And I have no comments. People have already expressed them, so.
Thank you. And you're definitely going to have to lift that mic.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That works. Sheldon Ronhold, my last name is spelled R-O-N-H-O-L-D-T. I'm at 4075 Fenton Court. As I walk through the neighborhood, I ask people, you know, what do they think of Urban Green coming into our neighborhood? And I get a response, no one residing on Fenton Court or in the surrounding communities are in favor of opening up Fenton Court to through traffic for the development of 26 housing units that is planned by Urban Green Development. And that was consistent across the board. They felt that the traffic was going to be bad when all these housing units become in there, and so, they just didn't want to open up Fenton Court to through traffic. There has been no meetings with Urban Green, and like they said they were going to do, on the, have a meeting on the third week of April, and that didn't happen. And I think it's extremely important, on these situations, that we have communication with the developer. And I think that's something that was severely lacking in this, in this situation, because when you don't have communication with the developer, all, I mean, there's a lot of things that are misrepresentative. So, I think things could have gone a lot better if we had more information from the developer. Like, these meetings that you were talking about, I think they still should go forward, and so, the community can really address the issues. And some people are, do not have telephone numbers to contact these people, and so, but they still have concerns here that they want to be addressed. As early as December 13th, 2012, a meeting was held by the Wheat Ridge Community Development Department to discuss the complete plans of Urban Green Development Company. The Fenton Court residents at that time should have been notified by the mail of the developer's plan, so that any misinformation could be averted. Here's another instance, that when it first started, you know, if we were, could address this situation, why, a lot of situations could have been avoided. Street parking that is available to Fenton Court residents is limited, and we have an overflow of parking from the development will cause additional congestion to our streets, additional safety hazards, illegal parking in front of our driveways. This will inevitably happen with the increased congestion on Fenton Court, if it is opened up to through streets. We are really concerned, because that's the parking that we use is on Fenton Court. And if we have, from the developers, development, if we have those people coming and parking on our streets, it's going to be a real problem for us. And so, that would be a big issue. We are in a severe drought climate, and we, as residents of Wheat Ridge, are undergoing severe water restrictions. And now the developer, how can the developer get water permits to use thousands of gallons of our water when we are under these water restrictions? And that's, water is always a real issue for us. And now, we're going to be cut back, but now the development can use a lot of our Question, Fenton Court, will Fenton Court incur any digging of the holes or for utilities and that thing? Will our street be dug up? Has there any been, any considerations been for the Fox family? There is a family of foxes that are living on the west side of 5801 West 38th property in one of the greenhouses over there. And so, they've been there for years, and they raised a lot of their family right at that spot there. And I'm just wondering, what are going to be the considerations to the developer from this Fox family? Are there any tax incentives given to these developers? Does Urban Green develop and receive any green incentives for using solar energy, energy-saving materials, environmental-friendly materials? materials, environmental-friendly materials? And if so, how many dollars are used in this fashion? I know we've already addressed some of those issues. Do these incentives, if there are incentives, do these incentives come from the city of Wheat Ridge, Jefferson County, the state of Colorado, or the federal government? Who is responsible for paying the taxes and utilities on 5801 West 38th Avenue development property when the units are built and before the proposed 26 units are purchased? Is that Urban Green going to pay the taxes on that? Will Urban Green Development be giving a tax break on this property? Would this tax rate be any different than what Wheat Ridge residents would take when they take ownership of the property? Would they be giving any special tax incentives to do this? What is the total financial gain to these proposed 26 residential units to the city of Wheat Ridge from the property taxes, sale taxes, and any other income agreements related to Urban Green Development? There. Thank you.
Any questions? No. So before I call the next name, we're going to take a little break. We've all been sitting here for an hour and 45 minutes, so we're going to take a break until five of, so a 10-minute break, if you don't mind, and then we'll resume our public hearing. I'm going to reopen the public hearing, and the next name I have is Ellen Goodnight.
I would like to defer my question to my husband, who will be speaking and talking about the building.
Thank you. He's listed next. Gary Wood, Goodnight.
My name is Gary Goodnight. I live, and that's G-O-O-D-N-I-G-H-T. We live at 5825 West 39th Avenue. That is a cul-de-sac just south of the proposed development. I'd like to start out with just a question, and I don't know who could answer this, but just a general question. There is a sewer easement that is, a sanitary sewer easement, that is indicated on page two of two of the final plat of incarnation. And my concern about that is that what impact is that going to have on our cul-de-sac if that is indeed used as a sanitary sewer? Are they going to be digging up our street? Are they going to be digging up a line through people's properties to get to that? I'm just concerned about that one.
Sorry about that. The door locks automatically if you shut it, so we need to keep it ajar. Well, that's an existing sanitary sewer easement, and the sanitation district has acknowledged the fact that it's there. They are accommodating it in the plat. I'm not sure if that's going to impact you guys or not.
So it might have to be dug up and increased in size or whatever?
That's a potential, but the developer might have better information than I do on that, so...
Okay. All right. My next points basically are more along the lines of comments. I was really glad to hear Mrs. Record, am I saying your last name correct, talk about consistency within the neighborhood. It tends to make me feel better about all of this, because we've lived in the neighborhood for about 17, almost 18 years now, and we moved here because we liked the neighborhood. So it made me feel good about that. But then I started looking at the architectural drawings, and we've had these, thank you for giving us these drawings, for some time now. And first of all, the style of the architecture is not the neighborhood. First of all, they're two-story homes, and there are very few two-story homes, even if you count the apartment building at basically 41st and Gray. That would account for, I would suspect, less than 20% of the neighborhood's total residences, and that's only a two-story building. Then unfortunately, Ms. Record brought up the straw dog of a three-story apartment building, which we might very well be able to put on in our three parts of land. I think it's a straw dog, because I'm not sure anybody in here would stand for that, including the commissioners. But is that to make us feel better about the fact that we've got 26 units on a parcel of land that is approximately the same size as our little cul-de-sac, which has eight units? Now, I'm not against folks using land that is theirs, but we do have to have some respect here. And my feeling is that 26 units in a parcel of land, as small as that is, is way over the top, and I'd like to just go on record with that opinion.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. And I'm going to get this one wrong. I apologize. Dave Newsen?
My name is Dave Newsen, N-E-W-S-O-N, 3985 Eaton Street. Okay, I moved in to that address in 1969. At that time, the alley, the flagpole, as you call it, was used by every imaginable different kind of truck. Morrison, they were operating the greenhouse, it was full blast, and then sometime in the early seventies, they closed down. And so the alley fell into disrepair. And Sam Morrison was the son that eventually wound up kind of maintaining the place while his mother lived in the house that exists now. And she was a neat lady. She taught Latin and what a fascinating lady she was. But anyways, he said to me, "You can use the alley any way you want, just, you know, just take care of it." And so we did. And for the last twenty-some years, we've maintained that alley. Last year, I brought in a chipper truck. And it was just basically, that alley was just a dumping ground for anybody that wanted to dump stuff. They knew it was there and they'd back in at night. And so we cleaned it up. We filled up a truck full of wood chips out of the, all the wood that we got out of that alley. And if you notice today, as I talk to the developer, it's pretty clean. Now, we, I use that alley. I heat my house with wood. I bring the wood in to the back. I have no other way to get into the back part of my property. I'm two-hundred-and-fifty-eight feet from Eaton Street. And the developer just told me that he's going to put a fence up there and he's not going to allow me to use that alley. And I think earlier you were suggesting on the existing plan, is, am I correct, that you're, it's not to be used by vehicles? On this, on this plan, is the walkway is prohibited by vehicles? Well, that was used for years, vehicles. And if you go through that plan, you're going to shut me down and a bunch of other people who live on the same side of the street as I do. And how am I going to get wood and how am I going to have access to the back part of my property? That's going to be a real imposition on us. Okay, and I'll echo what the guy just said before me. If we want to maintain a neighborhood, how can you possibly consider a plan as a group? For two and a half acres and twenty-six residences, how can you logically defend that? Why not just make, build four or five houses like the ones that we live in? Okay, that's my, that's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Mary Ann Whitehead? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Joanna, pardon me, Buchholz? Sorry if I missed.
Okay, so my name is Johanna Buckles, B-U-C-H-H-O-L-Z. And I just bought the house on forty-seventy Fenton Court a month and a half ago. And I just basically wanted to say that, sorry, I'm not good with public speaking. I'm kind of bummed out because if I would have known that our street might become a through street, we probably wouldn't have considered buying the house there. And I'm concerned about the traffic. We're having a child in August. And it was, it's been really nice for the past month living on a cul-de-sac. So we're concerned about traffic and safety for our child because it was kind of cool to think about that. I didn't grow up in Wheat Ridge. I grew up in North Denver, but I walked by that street every day on my way home from school every day. So I feel like I know the neighborhood, so it's kind of a bummer to think that we just moved into a neighborhood we can't afford in North Denver, so we thought Wheat Ridge would be great. And now we're kind of like, well, there goes our cul-de-sac. And it's been nice living on it because at night, there's no cars that drive down my street. I've noticed just a month, like if there's a car that drives by, you know, you notice it because you're like, oh, they must actually live here. But now, if it's a through street, there's going to be cars driving by all the time. I feel like, you know, then I can't leave my car unlocked at night or, you know. There's going to be a lot more traffic, maybe crime even, which I know sounds a little dramatic, but could be true, so. Just wanted to voice my opinion that it might, you know, have changed my husband and I's choice on whether we wanted to purchase that house. Because we were really excited about being a dead end or cul-de-sac, or, so it's kind of a bummer. Also, there's a school bus that drops off at the end of the block on Forty First. And if there's a lot of traffic, I just feel like with that being a park there, with people going to the park, kids playing, stuff like that, you know, added traffic kind of makes it more dangerous for children, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Chris Whitehead? Thank you. Noah Lorenz? Thank you. Darcy St. Auburn?
Hi, my name is Darcy St. Auburn, S-T period, A-U-B-I-N. I live in the house fifty-nine twenty West Thirty-Ninth Place. My house and the driveway border the property to the west. And I'm concerned about the entrance on Thirty-Ninth Place. It is so thin that when cars are parked on both sides, it's like threading a needle with my Toyota Corolla just to get to my driveway. And if you had a car bigger than that, and then it would even be harder to get through, if you could even could get through. And it would cause maybe damage to cars if a bigger car tried to get through there, so that's a concern. Also, I have two small children. And frankly, they're not very traffic trained because there's no traffic on our street right now. And so I really am concerned for their safety. I mean, I know I have to tighten the ropes, but things happen. And so I just wanted to express that.
Thank you. Any questions? I have a question, actually. So you're talking about the parking on Thirty-Ninth Place?
Yes.
So people park on both sides of the street?
Yes.
And then you're coming in and trying to drive into your...
My driveway borders the property then.
And the who's, are those your neighbors' cars? Like overflow cars?
Yeah, they're, our cars and then the across the street neighbors' cars.
Okay, so you use your driveway plus the street?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. Gary or Kathy Wardle? Hi, Gary.
Good evening. I'm Gary Wardle, D-A-R-D-L-E. I'm the property owner. My daughter is the one that lives there with her two, my two grandkids and her son-in-law. We have just a couple of questions. I did hear that there are environmental concerns on the property. I would like to make sure that I have some contact people, that if there's a lot of dust in the area when they start removing that dirt, that we've got somebody to contact. I know that I worked when I was with the city of Wheat Ridge. We bought a piece of land similar to that, and we were not able to develop it into a park because of the environmental problems. So I'm familiar with the DDT and the Durban. And so I'm concerned about the, the environmental hazards. And when they start moving all that dirt and the dust they're going to have, I'm just concerned that our house abuts the property where the greenhouse is, right on the south side of the property. So our property would be the one that would get a lot of the dust when it starts blowing around. So we want to be able to contact and start, make sure that we have good dust control during that process. We would like to have a six-foot stockade fence. The driveways that come into the homes drive right into our backyard. And so we want to be able to block lights at night and, and not have that disturbance at night in our backyard. So we want a, a stockade fence if at all possible. I know there's no landscaping at the end of the road either. It looks like it's just a rock pad. I think we'd like to get some trees or something along there to help with the screening in the future. And I think Darcy addressed the concern with the road because it is, we were there this weekend and it, there is barely room for a car to go one way with cars parked on both sides of the street on Thirty-Ninth Place. And then I believe that the B model, which is right adjacent to our property, is a three-story townhouse. It's only twenty feet from our, and we have a side yard setback, so we're only like thirty feet from this three-story building that's going to be right next to our house. And we're, would certainly like to get that down to a two-story if we can. I know they talked about this maybe being just a, a master plan and there were some opportunities for changing that. But if we could get those down to a two-story, if you approve this, that might be something we'd like to see happen if, if we can, so. I think that addresses the concerns I have. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, one, just to clarify, so you're on the west side where the unit Bs are going, on Thirty-Ninth Place?
Right. We're on the south side of Thirty-Ninth Place. And our property abuts the whole west side of their pro, east side, west side of their property from Thirty-Ninth all the way to the corner. So we have the full, we've got the row homes and the town home, or the duplexes about our property all the way down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Clark? Thank you. Judy Vance? Thank you. Sorry, guys. Some of you signed twice, so I don't want to call you and look silly. Did I just say yes? Okay. Is it Lon Wheeler?
Luke Wheeler, and I have a comment.
Thank you, Lou. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, Albert?
Hall.
Hall?
Yeah, I know it's a Hall.
Hall. Thank you.
Okay, so.
Come on up. Say your, spell your last name.
Albert Hall, H-O-H-L, fifty-nine forty-seven West Thirty-Ninth Place.
Thank you.
It used to be a chicken coop, and then during the depression, it was turned into three units. When I moved in there, the lawn was one-third dandelions, one-third grass, and one-third tree roots. I dug up all the tree roots and dug up all the dandelions and it looks nice now. Anyway, I grew up in North Denver by old eliches, and I'm forty-six years old. But I spent ten years going back and forth between here and San Francisco, and I drove a cab there. So I'm partly from there and partly from here. The cul-de-sac where we live on Thirty-Ninth, it's not a cul-de-sac, but it's kind of like one. It's so nice and peace and quiet. And it's like, it's like the first time in my life I've ever had peace and quiet, ever, in twenty-five years, you know? And if they make that through from Fenton Court to Thirty-Ninth Place, it's not going to just ruin my peace and quiet, it, all of us. You know, and everyone that spoke here knows that that, connecting that street, connecting Fenton Court to Thirty-Ninth Place will ruin all our peace and quiet, all of us. And it's just like, for me, I mean, to, to have peace and quiet for the first time in my life, it's just, it's rough to consider that this could happen, you know? And let me think, what else do I have to say? Ah, that's good enough. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Carol Roland? Thank you. Thank you. Daniel Feimster, Feimster, pardon me.
A valiant effort. Thank you. My name is Daniel Feimster, F-E-I-M-S-T-E-R, five-nine-two-five West Thirty-Ninth Place. I've lived at the very corner of, of the western edge of this development. And to tell you the truth, this whole thing, I moved in eight years ago. And this whole thing has lasted a lot longer than I thought it would. I always knew the Morrison place would be developed. But what they're proposing right here is completely out of character with our neighborhood. I would guess that the developers don't even know what the name of the neighborhood is. It's called Randall Park. And this just doesn't, doesn't work. I mean, as far as they're, they're putting on this big, we're like really, with, you know, participating in the community and we're community-minded and environmentally-minded, and they talk to three people, and that's supposed to be like showing how much they care, that's just, that's not going to cut it. What I'm asking the council to do is to deny them the variance, deny them the right-of-way, just like Ron said, send them back to the drawing board and have them start over. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Hank Corley?
Cordova.
Cordova. Thank you, Hank. Well, you were at the bottom of the page too, so you, you can be excused.
Cordova, fifty-seven eighty-five West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, C-O-R-D-O-V-A. So I guess I'm at the top, the furthest south of the flagpole. Is that what we're calling it, right? And my concern firstly is since they revamped Thirty-Eighth to, to the ridge, is I come from, from the west and I get in the middle lane and I take a left on Fenton going into the property. Well, actually, the right-of-way, which is the alley that we call it. My property goes three-hundred feet from Thirty-Eighth to the back of the property. So I take that area to go into my property to park. And I feel safer doing that since they revamped Thirty-Eighth. That's going to be taken away according to the plans, and it's going to become somewhat of a, a, a right-of-way for pedestrians or people from that, from that property or the, the units that I believe is way too many for that chunk of property. I believe that it's going to upset my lifestyle as far as getting into that, into that. I have maintained that for seventeen years, the alleyway, like this gentleman was talking about, the, we call it the alley. So that's a negative on my part. Another thing is I am absolutely in disagreement as far as they were concerned, or, or stadium, that they're going to use that solely, that alleyway to take out the toxic waste. I have a garden I've been working on for, you know, five years, and it's getting established, and it's right next to it, not five feet from that alleyway. And I'm very concerned about that. I am raising chickens currently, and it's a great lifestyle. We've been doing that for two, three years. And, and I let them free range. It's really difficult for me to see that there's going to be people walking by there and, and they're just not, they're happy the way it is right now. And I don't want, and it's going to really bother me to have people walking up and down the alleyway. And there were some else, but I don't recall, but mostly the other folks that were kind of opposing it, and certainly the amount of units is definitely a concern of mine. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you for coming. Okay. Dale Hurley?
My name's Dale Hurley. I live on forty-ninth Fenton Court, H-U-R-L-E-Y is my last name. But we've been living on that block for twenty-eight years. Some of my neighbors over here have been there a lot longer. We have some new people living in there. When we bought the place, it was because of the quiet, the cul-de-sac. I mean, our whole block is ten houses, not even an eighth of a mile long. And we're talking about, you know, extending our boundary line, our cul-de-sac for twenty-six units. That's probably another eighty, ninety cars are going to be coming down my block every night because they're not going to go down Thirty-Ninth. They're going to come down our street on Forty First going to Walmart and stuff, or going home. And that's just, you know, it's pretty ridiculous, you know, we moved in there for a quiet neighborhood. What they're doing, you know, the address is fifty-eight oh-one West Thirty-Eighth Avenue. It's not Forty First Avenue, it's not Thirty-Ninth Avenue, it's Thirty-Eighth Avenue. That is confusing, like she said. But, you know, they do, if they put a road in from Thirty-Eighth Avenue... But, uh, you know, they, they do, if they put a road in from Thirty-eighth Avenue, which you guys are trying to improve on, on Thirty-eighth Avenue with your little lines and stuff there and the new businesses, the new 7-Eleven, stuff like that, then, uh, extend a road to Thirty-eighth Avenue for access. It has nothing to do with Forty-first, Thirty-Ninth. Uh, you will take away somebody's, uh, alleyway over there. You know, the whole thing's ridiculous, twenty-six units in that little area, you know, another eighty, eighty cars coming down my block every night? It's ridiculous. You know, I shoot from the hip, you know, I, it's just, uh, I just don't see it. I don't care who bought the property or what, but, uh, we've been there for how many years? Twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-five years? I mean, how would you like eighty cars coming down your block every night? That's all.
Thank you. Britta Fisher. Did Britta leave? Britta left. Okay, I have gone through my list. However, there's an opportunity for anybody that I didn't call that wants to speak. Come on up. Oop, she raised her hand first. Thanks, thanks for being patient.
Okay, my name is Patricia Allen, A-L-L-E-N, and I live at Thirty-nine forty-five Eaton Street. So, our property backs to the alley, as we call it, we don't call it a flagpole, it's never been a flagpole. Um, what it is, is a quiet little place. My children learn to ride their bikes there. My dog launches off the boat in our backyard and lands there quite comfortably. It's a nice, quiet place. We don't really, I can't see bringing these semi-trucks. And I know David said, "They used to do that," but I've been there, I'm the new kid on the block, I've only been there twelve years. I've never had those kind of giant trucks come down my backyard. And now you wanna load them with toxic waste and drive them basically through my backyard. And you stood up here a few minutes, well, an hour or so ago, and you said to us that your company believes in community. Well, I'll tell you where I come from, and I'm not a native, I'm sorry, but I'm not. But where I come from, community means you walk up to me, at my home and you knock on the door and you introduce yourself and you tell me what you'd like to do in my backyard. You don't do it behind closed doors, you don't keep it to yourself until the last minute. That's not how you garner community. And I don't believe anyone here in this room thinks of that as community. So I think that what you need to start thinking about is those of us in this room who've been on the surrounding property, the surrounding land, for thirty years, forty years, ten years, six months. It doesn't really matter. We're there, it's our property and we are your community. And you need to start thinking about us and you need to start doing those community meetings. And another thing I'd like to mention is the, um, the idea that you're gonna, you know, David said earlier, they plan on putting a gate up and locking us out of our backyards. I don't know when they're gonna do that and you know what? I have trucks in my backyard that I need to get out of there. Nobody's come to me and said, "You have to do that right now, today, tomorrow." I don't know when I have to remove those vehicles. I have a boat in the backyard, I need to move that apparently. 'Cause I can't access my backyard from Eaton Street. I have to come up the alley. It's the only option I have to get those out of there. And I think other people on that, that access, use the alley access, also have things that they probably need to remove if they're never gonna get access to their alley again. Another item that I'm concerned about with the alley is the idea that now we have eighty to a hundred people living basically in our backyards and they're gonna start walking across, you know, through what was my backyard and where's the security for me? That's a lot of people going through my backyard. I have dogs, I've just recently gotten them to be friendly with my neighbors and I don't wanna start that again. So if you have people walking through my backyard, you're also gonna have my dogs barking. Um, you know, who's gonna put up a fence? What kind of fence are you gonna put up? And now I'm closed in, now I don't have, you know, that access to the backyard. My kids use it to access Thirty-eighth. Um, you know, you can walk out the gate, we use it to bring our vehicles in. So it's a huge problem for us and just tonight I learned that I'm not gonna have access to that anymore. So, it's not community when you do things like that. I assure you, it's not community. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw another hand. Oop, she, yes. Then, then. First name, last name, address, thank you.
My name is Sally Ronholdt, R-O-N-H-O-L-D-T, and I live at Forty-seventy-five Fenton Court. And my husband and I, we've raised our family on Fenton Court, we have lived there a long time. And I'd just like to echo the density problem again, the twenty-six units, because I don't know if you've had an opportunity to drive up Fenton Court, any of you, and actually see it when cars are parked on both sides of the street, because we do use the street parking in addition to our driveway. Our houses were built in nineteen fifty-three, so the driveways are rather narrow. And the other thing, it's so tight and putting two-lane traffic down that street is going to be, I think, very, very dangerous. The other item that I'd like to address is the traffic going out on Forty-first Street because that's right by Randall Park. It's a very popular park. Softball is going on all the time and summer, summer nights, there are loads of cars, even with the additional parking that you have provided. And I just think that the addition of twenty-six units with all the extra cars going in and out Fenton Court onto Forty-first Street is just going to be overwhelming for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy Wardle and I, we own the property at Fifty-nine twenty West Thirty-Ninth Place, which is just adjacent, it's gonna be about twenty-five, twenty to thirty feet from Building B, our, the edge of our home there. And that's not very fun. But I have to say, I think this is a very nice development. I think it's well-planned. I have some concerns. One is a density factor. I really think that the little flagpole issue that that was taken into calculating the density factor should be taken into consideration and that perhaps a few less units should be allowed. Second, um, we clearly have a traffic problem. You've heard that Thirty-Ninth doesn't work, you've heard Fenton doesn't work, and you've heard the alley doesn't work. I think that you need to make all three work. I hate to say Thirty-Ninth 'cause it's just so little, I don't think it's gonna be safe. But the traffic divided by three is better than by two. So I would suggest that all three outlets be used as, um, uh, a way to get into the development. So those are my concerns. And then the third and final point is I would like to see the buildings limited to two-story. I think three-story is too high for this area. Not only does it impact the, the visualness of the homes to the east 'cause they can't, I mean, they're gonna feel boxed in. Our home, it's gonna be like a mountain right next, twenty-five feet from our house. So I would like to see the units to the two-story. I noticed there were two-story plans. I would like those plans to be addressed positively. And those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Again? Come on up. This is Albert Hall.
Couldn't think fast enough before to mention this, but I really appreciate the safety of where I live. I have this little green wagon I use for gardening and stuff and I leave it out in my yard and it, it stays there. It doesn't, and I got my aluminum ladders out in visible sight. And if there's people driving by, some scrapper's gonna take my ladders or something. And, you know, and so we're losing our safety. We're, we'll, we'll lose our, not our just peace and quiet, but our safety also. Uh, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Come on up. You're gonna have to move that down. Yep.
Hi, my name is Brenda Hurley and I live at Forty-ninety Fenton Court. And, you know, I feel like we all knew that there was gonna be a development here eventually. And I, I feel like the section of Wheat Ridge that we live in, we're all, we all know that we're in the black hole where we're at. We often don't get the protection that we need sometimes, you know, there's lack of people watching or, uh, law enforcement around. I mean, that's been evident all the years that I've been there, twenty-eight. And so I feel like this is, there's, this could be a positive to bring some attention to our community, to, um, know that we are part of Wheat Ridge, an important part of Wheat Ridge, and perhaps, um, be looked at more as, as, you know, not just a little black part of the, black hole of the community. So I feel like this is a positive move in the right direction. However, it feels like it's very sectioned, carved out to me and, and all this, all this attention is going on this brand-new development with, obviously, many multiple dwellings, which, uh, really is overkill here. And it feels very, um, closed. It's, it's almost like a gated community with no gates. So you wanna live your, in your little community here with all these dwellings and then the people on the other side are still maybe in the black hole, but, um, you know, we're gonna go through your place, we're gonna go through your place, but we're not sure how welcome you're gonna be in our little section here. So I like the idea of the positive piece coming to us in our little section of Wheat Ridge that I believe has been overlooked for many, many years. And, um, I just feel like, again, as many people have said, as a community, our little community there, we all need to have a voice in what is, um, what is put there. And, and I like the idea of, I think it's, I think it's a great idea that if it's possible, go back and start over and see what else we can come to terms it with, that everyone can agree with. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Come on up. First name, last name, address, please.
Judy Vance, Fifty-seven sixty, West Forty-first. The concern, most of the concerns, um, have been addressed here tonight, but when you start talking about the toxic, uh, ground that's there and removing it and trying to remove it all out toward Thirty-eighth down the alley, uh, you've got a restaurant sitting at the end of that alley and Thirty-eighth. And that concerns me immensely that you're gonna be taking all that toxic waste out and what impact that will have on the Red Tango. So I think there needs to be some serious consideration about that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last time, last chance. Come on up.
Well, I, uh, on that note, I'm right.
Sorry.
I have no, no chance, I don't have a vote.
Albert got a chance, you can have a chance.
I guess I, you got my information, right? Do I gotta do that again?
Could you restate it for?
Hank Cordova, C-O-R-D-O-V-A, Fifty-seven eighty-five West Thirty-eighth Avenue. So I live right, uh, right, uh, east of Red Tango. And on that same note, is all I wanted to say was, my kitchen is right in the same alley. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last chance for citizen.
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Um, it is now the applicant's time to address any questions or concerns that were raised. Did you wanna speak? Come on up.
I have to bring my notes.
Can everybody hear me okay? Great. So there's a couple of common themes that I've found tonight, that there's really three different directions we can go. We can go up Fenton, we can go out west Thirty-Ninth, and we can go down the alley. And nobody really wants us to go anyway, but we gotta go somewhere. We've discussed the possibility of, you know, internally, we discussed the possibility of, of not putting in a right-of-way, of putting in a cul-de-sac at the end of Fenton, extending another cul-de-sac and developing off that. We've talked about different ways, having two cul-de-sacs, one off West Thirty-Ninth, one off Fenton. What we've got right here is truly the best, most fair possible way that we can access the property. One of the things I'd like to talk about, the alley, that everybody's concerned about, we had planned on making it an alley and letting everybody use it for accessing the back of their house. It was the city's master plan and what, what they wanted us to do was create that pathway. Maybe we have a possibility of doing, having a dual-purpose area, which we'd be totally happy to accommodate. They refer to it as the alley and it's used often, I guess, it's a dirt path with two wheel ruts, wheel ruts in it. And, um, it's just expensive to us to improve it, but if the neighbors would genuinely like to see that usable and if the city doesn't object to that, we're very happy to, to offer that up. The other thing, common theme that I've heard, is that people are worried about their privacy, the houses are gonna be high, they're gonna be very tall, or three stories, four stories, three stories, whatever that happens to be. One of the things I'd like to tell you is, we have plans ready to go. We're ready to go to permit, produce these houses, put 'em on the tax rolls, get the parks fees paid, get the infrastructure in, loop the water lines, do all that work. But part of being urban green is you don't build houses that are thirty-five feet tall. We keep nice, small, little envelopes, low ceiling heights. Um, I'm not saying really low ceiling heights, I'm not talking seven foot like nineteen seventy stuff, but predominantly, our product is two stories tall, that the first floor plate is about ten feet and the second floor plate's about eight feet. So it's not terribly high. We didn't ask for any sort of a height variance, we haven't asked for any consideration from the city there at all. The common theme that, that seems to be the white elephant in the room are these variances. We didn't really understand that we had to request variances. We thought when we did the PBG, that you were gonna approve the PBG as drawn and that was gonna establish the guidelines for the project. You know, the, the variances, we kinda found out, Meredith discovered it at the last moment, that we had some violations. And we discussed ways of redrawing the plans, so we didn't have to ask for any variances. Commissioner Scott pointed out, um, Scott Ohm pointed out that in the letter, the first letter that we wrote, said, "We were requesting no variances because we truly thought we weren't requesting any variances." We found four places where we had asked for variances when Meredith brought it to our attention. Consequently, our meeting was delayed by a couple weeks. It wouldn't hurt my feelings at all to continue this if, if the, if the council didn't think they could support our variances. It would not hurt our feelings at all to continue this process, to let us go back to the drawing board, come back here in a couple weeks or a month and show you how we can address the site without variances. That being said, the variances we're asking for, I don't think are oppressive. I served for five years on the border zoning adjustments with the city of Boulder and I heard variance requests on a monthly basis or sometimes a bi-weekly basis. And the criteria that we used to evaluate that was, was there hardship? Could it be addressed? Did it affect the quality of the community? The variances that we've asked for are all internal to our site. None of the variants we asked for will be impacting the outside of the project at all. What they've argued or what seems to be the underlying discussion here is, don't approve the variances and we'll get fewer units. But the fact of the matter is, is we can easily redesign the site without variances and preserve the number of units. and preserve the number of units we're asking for. So, if you can't support the variances, just let us know, and continue it, and we'll redraw it. However, I'd like you to seriously consider what we've asked for as far as the variances go. Two of the variances are, well, one of the variances on Building A, is there any way to put the variance map up?
They get that on their screen?
They do.
Okay.
So, let's look at Building A. Building A is unique. It has two front yard, front yard setback requirements. Many municipalities have that same code, and I've done entitlement work all across the state. Many municipalities have the same code that you're asking for, but this is also one that is often varied, often varied when you've got two front yard setbacks, because it creates a real hindrance to the development of the site. Oftentimes, you've got very little, very little opportunity to build on a corner lot. Now, what's unique about this is that we can actually shift all the buildings a little bit to the left on this Building A, reduce the width of our, of our structures by a couple feet, and we don't need the variance. We can eliminate that unit, and we don't need the variance. We could put a duplex in there, get rid of two of the single-family homes, put a duplex in there, move it together, and we don't need the variance. So, if, if these variances really give you heartburn, just let us know, we can change that. But I think that this variety of houses is a significant element, a significant positive to the project, the seven single-family homes. Look at now Building B. Building B is the row houses. These row houses, so that everybody's clear, these are the two-story row houses, not the three-story row houses. These are the two-story row houses. In exchange for the variance, we would be very happy to agree to a height limitation in this area. I mean, clearly, what we've got, if, if we, if you would like us to redesign it for a 25-foot front yard setback, we can do that. We can reduce the length of the structure, and we can go up the extra floor to establish, to get our, our 1,200 square feet, which is what we're looking for in the row homes. We can certainly modify that structure, but I don't think, in new urban living, almost all new urban design has smaller front yard setbacks. You are engaging the neighborhood by putting the house close to the street. That's what we've done here. If that offends you, or if that's something you don't think you can support, then continue the process and give us an opportunity to redraw this. If you look at Building C, Building C, we've, again, we've got this situation where we're too close to the front yard. We would be very happy to modify that, reorient that house. One of the reasons why that house, that duplex is oriented that direction is to increase the amount of open space between all the units and create that park area that we've described there. If that one was really something that, that you didn't feel like you could support, we'd be happy to eliminate that Building C, put one single-family home in there, and call it good. We could easily redesign it in such a way that we don't need the variance for that. And finally, Unit D. The same thing there. Really, all we need to do is change the direction of the house, and we can eliminate the need for that variance. So, what I'm coming to in saying is this, I think these variances are in character for the community that we've developed, for what we've designed here. They're not impactful to the people on the outside. These are all variances interior to the project. If it impacts them in any way, shape, or form, all it's doing is establishing a, a character of this neighborhood and defining the number of units we have. So, if we need to redesign, we're very happy to do that. So, if you can't support the variances, what I'm asking you for is a continuance on the PBG. So, what I'd like to do now, that's fundamentally my argument about the variances, we have met majority of the code, there's this list of criteria that you have to have in order to qualify for a variance, we've met the majority of them. If this were administrative decision, I've been assured that it'd be administratively approved. It's not an administrative decision, we're asking you for your support on that. What I'd like to do now is, I made some notes while everybody was talking, and I just, I'll promise I'll be brief. I'd just like to go down this list. I'm so used to using my iPad, I'm trying to touch the screen. It's not a touchscreen. There was a question about the timeline. Our idea was we'd be in and out in 18 months, all 26 houses built, all 26 houses sold. There was a question about a fence. Everybody would like to see a fence around the area. We're very happy to include that. I think it's an addition to, the motion to approve was calling for a fence, we're very happy to support that. We would have no qualms with you specifying a six-foot perimeter stockade fence, or what I would call a privacy fence, around the perimeter of the, of the project. Now, I gotta put my glasses on, showing my age. There was a discussion by our resident engineer about water quality and looping the water lines. It's just on my list, so I'm gonna address it. The fact of the matter is, when you dead-end water lines, and we've got two dead-ended, dead-ended water lines there, you get sedimentation at the end of those lines. If you don't have a hydrant or a way to blow that out, it affects water quality dramatically. Not only is this project gonna improve the water quality in the neighborhood, but it's gonna improve, improve the water pressure as well. I've been doing this a lot of years. I gotta put my glasses back on now. The, the, I want everybody to know that that apartment house that Meredith showed you was never our idea, never our plan. That was not something we ever considered. However, and I'd like Meredith to chime in on this, if she has an opportunity to, that apartment house is a by-right project. It's one building on one lot. And so, you know, in a worst-case situation, and I can promise you, we would never build that apartment house. If we ended up selling the project to a different developer, he could build that, that apartment house, and you wouldn't be having this meeting right now, because that's one building on one lot. Am I right? Okay, so you understand, if you don't approve us, and we, for whatever reason, can't stay in the deal, if, and I understand, if you don't approve the PBG, we either go to court or we wait a year to reapply, it's very likely we sell. And if we sell, who does it go to? Maybe somebody who builds that apartment house. I promise you, we will never build it. But that's a by-right project. What we're asking for is to build a community, not build an apartment house. One of the concerns of the community, God, I gotta take my glasses off again, I'm so sorry about that. One of the concerns was parking, and we heard it, we heard people talking about how difficult it was to park on 39th Place. 39th Place has parked, they're parking on both sides of the street, and it's a substandard street size. We've got a 47-foot wide street, they've got a 39-foot wide, 30, 30 feet right-of-way, we've got 47 feet, and we're not parking on either side of our street that we're putting in, and we've got excess parking for the project. I mean, every evaluative criteria that the city's asked for to approve a project like this, we've met or exceeded. The other big issue in the room is density. A lot of the people came up to us during the break, when I thought I'd get out and get a drink of water, and talked about density. This property is zoned R3. Somebody thought about that when they zoned it R3. They didn't zone it R1, or A, R1A, or anything else. This was zoned, and it's been zoned for a long time, R3. We look around for opportunities to develop communities. We look for high-density development opportunities, and we try to put the best pen to it we can. We try to put the best brains, power, insight, foresight, and everything else to it. We haven't asked for an increase, we didn't ask for a zoning change, we didn't ask for anything. We just asked to be able to develop the property to the density that it was designated when it was zoned. The, I'm gonna look at my list again. One of the questions was, are we getting any tax incentives? Do we get any money? And I can honestly tell every one of you that we have not asked for any consideration from the city, from the state, from anybody. We're paying for the cleanup out of our own pocket. We haven't asked anybody to help us, we didn't ask, we, I don't even know if there's money available for that. We're paying for it out of our pocket. If, you know, it's harder if we reduce the density, the cleanup, our initial budget on the cleanup was $156,000. Now, we're very creative, and we've worked very hard, and we brought that price down to 50, $90,000, okay, for cleaning up that site. If we don't do it, somebody's gotta do it. Does it follow the community? Everybody wants to use the alley. Do we all wanna pay for the cleanup? We bought the site, it's implicit on us, we're paying for, we're paying to do it. Now, you take three or four units out of the project, it's harder to afford to pay for it. So, here's where we do get tax incentives, and here's where we do get some support. Every solar panel we put on the roof of a house, we get a state tax deduction, a federal tax credit, and we get money from Excel Energy to, because they don't have to build more power plants. And every one of these homes is solar-powered. Is that interesting to anybody, that the homes that we're building are efficient, economic, sustainable, and almost zero impact and almost no electric bill? Of course, the company that we've hired to do the mitigation, there was a concern about how it would be transported, how, where it would be transported. We wanted to take it down the alley because we thought it was the lowest impact. If the neighborhood wants us to send a third down the alley, a third up Fenton, a third out west 39th, we can do it that way. But the company we've hired is a very reputable company, they're insured, we're posting a bond with the city for the performance of the work, and we will make sure that everybody has their contact numbers, so if there's any dust or any problems like that, they can be on it right away. We are a responsible organization, we do things responsibly. So, in summary, this is what we got. There's some issues. The issues seem to fall upon the three access points. The people on west 39th Street really only want us to go out Fenton. The people on Fenton really want us to go out west 39th Street, and the people who use the alley wanna keep using the alley. We're okay if they wanna keep using the alley. We were guided by staff, right? Guided by staff to make that a pedestrian pathway to provide, and, and one of the things that we do as Urban Green is we provide community interconnectivity, and we thought it was a natural, the pathway down there, we thought it was a natural. We thought, and gosh, I drove up and down it, and you guys, if you're using it every day, it doesn't show. So, if, if, if we need it to be an alley, don't make that a deal-breaker. The other issue is the variances, okay? I'm sorry we had to ask for variances. I didn't intend to ask for variances, I didn't know I had to, it just came up. So, if you can't support our variances, please continue us, so we have an opportunity to redesign this, and we don't have to go back to the drawing board on the PBG. And the third thing is, the, I don't have a third thing. I'm all done. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, Scott?
I have a, I have a small one.
Okay.
It's really small. On this document on page 21, it would be the Urban Green Development Exhibit 8. On the last paragraph, it just, it talks about, it says, "Open parks, community gardens, and a dog run." I don't see any community gardens on the plan. Are you intending to put community gardens on the plan?
So, so I'm getting caught in this situation where we, our original plan, we had to modify it when we found out we had the very, we had to go through the variance issues. The, the park that's called a dog park in the southwest, I mean, on the south-central portion, was originally intended as a community garden. We had, okay, I'm not kidding, we talked about chicken coop, beehives, all kinds of stuff in the community garden. We didn't think that we could, it was in our right to impress that upon the H, the homeowners association. I mean, that's kind of ongoing maintenance and stuff like that. So, we are encouraging it, that sort of thing, but we took it off the plan. That's not to say that it's totally in our MO to offer community gardens, bees, chicken coops, stuff like that. We even thought, there's an old chicken coop on the, on the property, we even thought about remodeling the old chicken coop to keep it a chicken coop. Or not. So, thank you.
Monica?
I just wanna make a comment also. First off, thank you for answering all the questions, 'cause I made a list through here, and you covered most of them. And the major feeling I got was just that the residents wanted to be heard, their concerns, they live in that neighborhood, if I lived there, I'd have the same concerns too. And I think that you're willing to, it seems like you're willing to kinda work with them regarding the alley. I mean, they use that for accessing.
Right.
So, if there's a way we can do that for them, I would be in support of that. And also, let's see, the density and the variances, I think if we're all on board with that, then I could support this. So, thank you.
And if you guys wanna write it in to the approval that the alley has to remain open for, for access, you know, do so, please.
Thank you.
Steve?
Just one comment or question for the applicant regarding the alley slash pole. Is there any record of that being a access easement or a public right-of-way at any time in your title work?
Nothing that we've seen. There's no easements recorded over it or anything like that.
If, if that were to be, this is a question for staff, then if that were to be potentially used, would that need to, an access easement need to be placed on the plat? Okay, thank you.
Dick Matthews?
Just so you know, we have a great legal description for that, we could put it in in two seconds.
Amanda? Alan?
I just have some questions for staff, but nothing for the applicant.
Okay, and I don't have any que, oh, I do have one, that you didn't hit, low income. Clearly, the price point here is not covered by low income, so these, none of these apply to what used to be called Section 8, right?
So, at, pardon me. Generally speaking, single-family homes don't qualify, aren't counted. Our row homes, none of them met the, met the standard that we'd be required to do that.
Okay.
It, it would not be out of our character to do that, and-
But not here.
But, well, you know, if, if it were a condition of approval, I mean, we could talk about it. You know, there's all these trade-offs, like the variances for that, for the row homes, it being 10 feet back, we intentionally, you know, we tried to create as much first-floor space as we could, but in the Denver Highlands, there's oftentimes just garages on the first floor and living on the second, next two floors. I mean, part of the reason that we've designed it this way is to kinda spread it out, and we get more roof area for more solar panels. So, you know, that's, so if, when we talk about doing affordable homes, again, we kinda are looking at this threshold of, you know, at what point does the project become not economically viable too?
Got it. It was just a question one of the citizens asked. I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, now, questions of staff.
No, thanks.
Monica?
No, thank you.
Steve?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. The city of Wheat Ridge, do they have, currently have in place a inclusionary housing ordinance that mandates a certain percentage of affordable housing?
Not, not for affordable, just accessible housing.
Okay. Can we talk for a minute about the bulk standards in R3 Zone District? This property is zoned R3, all the properties to the north, south, and west are currently zoned R3, according to my zoning map. What's the maximum height allowed in the R3 Zone District?
It's 35 feet.
35 feet? And potentially, any property owner along Fenton, 39th Place, 39th Avenue could potentially build up to 35 feet currently as a use-by-right, is that correct?
Yes, with just a building permit.
And also, the density you referenced earlier for R3 is one dwelling unit for every 3,630 square feet, does that sound right? Potentially, anyone on Fenton, 39th Place- anyone on Fenton, Thirty-Ninth Place or Thirty-Ninth Avenue could potentially increase the density of those lots in accordance with the R-three standards without any type of hearing. Is that correct?
As long as they could meet the density standards.
And the setbacks and things like that, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
What would be the procedure for changing the, that pedestrian right-of-way to an alley? I'm a, I'm a real supporter of alleys. I don't know how many miles I had on the alley training my little girl how to ride a bike, but I remember that very fondly, so I really support the concept of alleys.
In defense of staff, I have to say that we acknowledge that it is not wide enough to meet our standard for two-way access. So, it would probably have to be one way. Okay? The other thing is that the path idea came up because of the, the lack of vehicular room, and we're like, well, they have to just make a Parkland dedication. Wouldn't this be an opportunity for them to do that as part of their Parkland dedication? I'm sure the developer would be happy not to make that investment because they're, you know, if they follow Parks Commission's recommendations, they're going to be paying anyway. So, we would have to consider how exactly that alley would have to function, and like I said, it doesn't meet our standard. So, we would have to look at that, and I just, you know, it's a little hard to address right off.
And from a public works standpoint, I don't think we'd be interested in taking over maintenance of an alley, so I don't, you know, having it become an alley. We've got a lot of alleys in, in town, and there are issues for us because of the, the narrow widths and things like that. And I know our police department has issues with alleys because a lot of crime happens along the alleys and stuff because they're back behind the houses and they're fairly hidden. So, so I think from a public works standpoint, we wouldn't be interested in having that be an alley that we would have to maintain. Where our budgets are stretched very thin already. Certainly, if, if there's some kind of arrangement between this property owner and the homeowners along there to allow access or something, we'd want to have an access easement, but we've got to bring that issue up to our directors and stuff because that, that's a, that's a pretty big change in what's going on, and there'd have to be some level of pavement of this, not just with crusher fines, but with, with something else to, to have it be a real access. And as Meredith said, typically, most of our alleys, people do tend to drive both ways, but generally there's signs as being a one-way kind of situation, and there's no way to have this be one-way into the site or out of the site because there's, there's a couple of houses in the way. So, I, without having to go back and relook at things, I'm hesitant to formalize this thing as an alley because there are a lot of things that we've got to think about from a traffic standpoint and everything else.
Are you done?
No, I, I have a question for the developer. If you'd like to address that.
So, I've done a lot of alleys that are less than sixteen feet wide. That offers two-way traffic. It's not easy. It's not nice, and people don't like it, but it's been used that way historically for a long time. We would be very much in support in leaving it as it is, meaning that, you know, do we need an access easement if, if, if the city wants one? We can grant an access easement over it. We were going to maintain it as a pathway, okay? If we can maintain it without pavement, and we can agree on the setback, on the variances and the density, we would be very happy to have the HOA, the HOA levied to maintain that access.
Dick, anything else? Amanda, is that a possibility? That's a question for staff.
We have to go back and consider it.
Yeah, I think we've got to talk to the Director of Public Works and figure out what to do. This is a real difference in, in what's going on. Part of the whole thing with the conversation about having it be a pedestrian way is that this gives people walking access directly to Thirty-Eighth Avenue and directly to Red Tango. We thought they could put a walk-up window there or something.
I guess what I'm asking is, can it continue to just be exactly what it is, which is an unmaintained driveway?
We'd have to have at least a certain length of it paved from the street because if it's kind of, we have a requirement for the first twenty-five feet of all driveways to be paved.
And because it's, it's turned over, it doesn't get grandfathered in anymore?
No. Oh, no, absolutely not. If someone develops something, they've got to bring it up to the standards. And, and part of my concern, understanding people use this to get to their yards and stuff like that, but we saw this as a, as a pretty busy pedestrian path. You know, the more people that walk in Thirty-Eighth, the fewer cars there are going to be on the surrounding streets. And so, we see that as a way of mitigating some of that traffic. And I'm concerned about, you know, if we've got people, if fences get put along the alley, you know, like a, a six-foot privacy fence, and there's a gate there, and somebody opens the gate and starts backing out, does somebody riding a bicycle quickly through there get tagged? So, it's, it's the issue of mixing vehicle and pedestrian traffic together, which we, we try not to do. Again, I think this is a big enough deal that I, I'm hesitant to say yea or nay either way. We need to take it back to a bigger group and have the conversation.
Is there a way that staff can recommend how we might create some way to, like, yeah, to move forward with this flagpole issue sort of hanging out there? Does that make sense? Sort of, because I, I really, I, I like the, the rest of the development for lots of reasons, but, but the flagpole thing seems to be a sticky part. Should I not have asked that? I'm never going to get to that.
We, okay. We would hesitate to do it that way just because, not only for safety concerns, but also it's going to really, really, really change the landscape coverage. And just, I mean, that's a big, that's almost a half an acre. It could take them down below the requirement. I mean, we don't know. So...
Okay, so, so approving this can't really have a, an attachment to going back to the drawing board for that particular part?
I don't think so.
Sounds like it's...
And I think part of it is what they've proposed in their plan for the landscape planned trail has maybe a six-foot path down there, which is not wide enough for anything unless it's a Mini Cooper, and even then you're pushing it. So, so I just, you know, it, it changes that whole plan. They've got pit lights planned. They've got landscaping planned. Everything in that area changes, and it's going to be hard to, for us as staff to, to figure that out. And...
Okay, with, um, can I, so, the decision on the flag, the alley, whatever we want to call it, is not hinging on the variance. So, we vote on the variance, then we vote on the P, PBG, whatever, right?
Yes.
And neither of those have anything to do with the flag, the alley, et cetera, correct?
Variance, well, I mean, the, the pole is part of the design.
Of the PBG?
Yes.
That's the, what we're...
Is it part of the design or is it, I mean...
It's part of the conditions because it includes the landscape.
Because it's got landscape.
Okay, so, okay, let's, okay, let's, are you done with your questions?
Okay, I, I just have one more. Is there a way that, that we can put it back on the developer to, to continue that conversation?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
You mean without moving back or?
Uh, yeah, okay. I'm done. Thank you.
Alan?
Okay. Let's see. So, Meredith, I know that everything over here is zoned R-three. I'm looking at, just for reference for everybody, page twelve, Exhibit Two, aerial photo. Now, I'm looking at a development directly to the northeast of the applicant property. And I see these little parcel lines here in these very, very, very small little rectangles.
Northeast or northwest?
Northwest, pardon me. I'm assuming this is, and it's been a while since I've driven slowly down that part of Forty-first to actually look in and see what's there. When I was cruising Thirty-Ninth Place and Fenton, I didn't look over there. Is that a multi-family, single or, I don't know, three-part building, assembly?
It's a townhouse project, and just by looking at it, it was probably built under the old density standard where it was twenty-one units per acre.
I'm counting twenty-two here, okay. So, so we do have a, we have a case adjacent to this property where we've, we've got, we don't have twenty-six units, but we've got twenty-two units in a smaller space, right? So, what the applicant's asking for is, in terms of density, is less dense than what you've got in that townhome area? Okay. Was there any discussion among staff about Fenton and Thirty-Eighth, Fenton Court and Thirty-Ninth Place being joined to assist in the completion of sort of the master grid?
Absolutely. And one of the, you know, a couple of the goals, not only with the NRS, but our architectural and site design manual, is to try to pursue connectivity, not only pedestrian linkages, but also to help with our grid system. We have a lot of cul-de-sac situations, and yes, definitely would fit not only with those two documents, probably also envision Wheat Ridge, the city's comp plan.
Okay. Was there any thought given to making Thirty-Ninth Place and Fenton Court one-way? So, for example, one-way east on Thirty-Ninth Place and one-way north on Fenton Court, so that traffic's at least all moving in one direction?
No.
All right, I'll save my other comments for when we're deliberating, but thank you.
Okay. Any more questions of staff? I have one question. There was some concerns raised by the citizens about Thirty-Ninth Place, and two cars, one parked on each side and barely room to drive through. That problem is not going to go away, is it? Okay. It's just the fact that the forty-seven foot is going to narrow down to whatever the Thirty-Ninth Place width is, because we're not going to take any land to widen Thirty-Ninth Place. It'll just funnel down. Will there be signage there or anything to, help me?
The, the forty-seven feet is right-of-way. That includes the five-foot sidewalks on both sides, plus the five-foot amenity zone, so that takes off, you know, twen, it, it, the street width is virtually the same. I, I don't think it's dramatically different. The existing, and I didn't measure the asphalt before the meeting, but the, it's basically a two-way street. By today's standards, that street wouldn't have parking on the side. What they're designing in their project is, you know, basically twenty-two feet of asphalt, I think, is the right number.
Right.
And that's basically a two-way street with no parking allowed. And we, we, we kind of went round and round on that, whether we should allow parking on one side, put in more asphalt and all those things. And it just, with that corner being there and stuff like that, we just didn't think on-street parking for this stretch would, would, would work. I, I don't know what'll happen with Thirty-Ninth Place. We typically don't proactively go out and sign streets, no parking. It's on a complaint basis only, and, you know, if streets are substandard, you know, Eaton Street, which is just to the east, doesn't have parking on the sides either because it's, it's sort of that rural cross-section. It's got the ditches on the sides, and it's just the twenty-two or twenty-three feet of asphalt in there. So, you know, nobody parks on the side of Eaton Street unless they've got their part of their property, they've got a little more asphalt out in front and kind of thing. So, I, I don't know. You know, if we get a lot of complaints, we may have to sign Thirty-Ninth Place, no parking, but I don't know that we've really addressed that yet.
Okay.
It certainly isn't wide enough to accommodate parking and traveling.
Got it.
Traveling, traveling.
Okay, I am done. So, with that, I'm closing the public hearing. So, what happens now is we discuss, and then I ask for a motion, and we're going to ask for the motion on the variance first. And then after we vote on that, i-if I get a second, then we vote on that, and then depending on the vote on that, we may continue the PBG case. So, talk amongst yourself.
Would you, what would you think about a condition for parking by permit only along Fenton and Thirty-Ninth Place?
Just to interject, I would feel uncomfortable putting conditions off the property on the approval. I mean, what we could do is, you know, take it under advisement, and I don't know what your process would be, Mark, but...
Yeah, we, we typically only do parking permits around the schools and some other uses like that where we have, you know, issues like that. We, we typically don't do it on local streets with this kind of thing going on. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure when these guys apply for a building permit that they have enough parking spaces to meet the code. So...
I've seen them on, over by Discovery Park where there's no schools.
And that was because the park was there. So, it's at, we typically do it at parks or at schools or things like that where, and again, Discovery Park has a substandard street. It's, it's only enough room for two ways and parking on the one side. The people are actually pulling up into people's yards to park along Discovery Park, which is why we did that.
Okay.
So, yeah, that, that's the other case.
Isn't there a process whereby the people in the community, if they decide they want to limit the on-street parking, actually can petition the city and have the on-street parking? Isn't that how schools end up with on-street parking limited? It's actually citizen-driven?
It, it is, but typically, we only do that around schools and things that are high uses and high impacts. I don't know that we've ever done it for anything other than a school or a park. We've had people ask this before. We, I think our policy is that we only do these around schools and parks and things where there's, there's bleed over in the neighborhood because of some other, some other impact.
I got something to say. Now, I live, I live on a cul-de-sac. I live on a corner lot. I don't live in an R-three zone, so I can't say that I am in exactly in everybody's shoes here. But the thing that, the, the, the thing that really gets to me a little bit here isn't necessarily, and I'm talking about the variances here, isn't necessarily the front setbacks on Building B here. I understand that. I've lived in row houses and dense housing before. That makes sense from a community standpoint. What I'm a little concerned about here is the side setback on Building A on that corner. You know, I know, and, and trust me, I've, I've got, I have to deal with the twenty-five-foot setback on the side of my house too, and it drives me bananas when I think about all that grass I have to water. But going from twenty-five feet down to like six and a half feet here would be a concern to me. It's a pretty drastic variance, and I understand the higher density. I understand the buildings closer together. I understand the theory of having these buildings closer to the, to the sidewalk. But, you know, when you look at that variance compared to the other variances that are being requested, it's, it's by far the biggest variance that we're looking at, and it just seems a little extreme to me.
Yeah, but look at the park in front. I mean, I hate to, they have a park in front, and then you cram the houses together, so not only are you watching the guy brush your teeth next to you, but you can see what type of toothpaste he's, if you mush him even closer together. I don't have a problem with the side setback because he's got all that front park area.
Yeah.
That's my...
So, it wouldn't, so, say...
Buyer beware. The buyer who's buying that knows what they're getting.
I'm just, I'm also trying to think about sort of the transition from the neighborhood just directly to the north on Fenton Court. Somebody walking or driving into Fenton Court, you know, with these relatively larger setbacks that they're encountering, and then they, they come into this. Obviously, it's denser, and I, and, you know, that's fine. That's part of the character of this development. But, you know, one of the first buildings they're going to see is that Building A there right hard up against the road, and I don't know. It's just, six and a half feet seems a little extreme to me.
Yeah, to reinforce Ann's point of view, we've got all the mixed-use zoning that requires a build-to line that actually puts the buildings fairly close to the street. So, I don't have a problem with that six-foot setback on that side.
so I don't have a problem with that six-foot setback on that side.
Fair enough.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I have a, I have a comment. One of the concerns is on the Building B, the height of it. I think my concern is that there's no, there's no trees on that west side of that building to kind of help mitigate some of that height, and that maybe we should consider making a condition of either evergreen or some type of deciduous tree either at or near that property line, so the neighborhood to the west of that isn't just seeing, you know, maybe a possible fence, yeah, and then that building right there.
Meredith, when is the time, proper time to address the fence and landscaping issues? Is that in the Plan Building Group?
I would think that would be the appropriate place, yes.
So if, there are no other, I'm going to, unless there are any other comments on the variance. Sorry, Alan. Sorry to beat you up on that one.
No, it's fine.
I'm going to take a...
That's why I'm here.
I'm going to take a motion. I'm asking for a motion on the variance, which is on page 10, for those of you, if they get lost. Did you notice they stapled it this time, Scott?
It's all of the stuff.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve case number WA-13-05, a request for approval of setback variances in conjunction with case number PBG-13-01 for property located at 5001 West 38th Avenue -4,000 Fenton Court for the following reasons. The variances would not alter the essential character of the locality as they are internal to the site. The request would not be detrimental to public safety or welfare. The proposed design provides a better traffic arrangement. Site enhancements such as increased landscaping and open space amenities compensate for the variances. The application is in substantial compliance with applicable standards set forth in the Architectural and Site Design Manual. A majority of the evaluation criteria support approval of the request.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Please vote.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Okay, now we're moving on to the Plan Building Group motion.
I move to continue case number PBG-13-01, a request for approval of Plan Building Group on properties zoned R3 and NC at 5001 West 38th Avenue slash 4,000 Fenton Court for the following reason. I would like to see the developer work with the community to determine access on the alley and the fencing conditions, so that when that is decided on, we would have a good list of conditions that we could put on that PBG.
Is there a second?
A second. She went first.
Okay, Monica.
I just have a discussion before we vote on that. Do we need to attach a date for continuance, or is that just open-ended?
If we gave it to a date specifically, we wouldn't have to re-notice, which is really expensive for us to send certified letters. What we were looking at, the next two planning permission dates was June 6th, and the other one is the 20th.
Is the applicant available for either of those?
You need time to talk to the neighborhood and the community, and besides that, I'm out on the 6th. I would really favor the 20th.
Okay, we had a, first a second. Let's vote.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Okay, so what's going to happen? Meredith, help me here. So we've continued this to June 20th, the second part of the case. The first, the first motion on the variance was approved. The second one on the PBG will continue until June 20th, and in the meantime, staff will work with the applicant and the neighbors to resolve or address concerns. Yes?
The third piece of it is, depending on what happens with the alley, it's going to affect the plat.
Yes.
So the plat needs to be continued until June 20th as well.
Oh, so we need a motion to continue the plat, somebody?
I move to continue case number MS-12-03 because it would be impacted by the other case we're continuing, and move to continue until the 20th of June.
Second. Okay, please vote.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Okay, so June 20th, we'll be back here same time, 7 o'clock. We'll be hearing PBG and the approval of the two-lot subdivision plat. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate this. We're not done, so when you leave, leave quietly. We're not done. We still have to close the meeting and such. I don't, I think they're, I think they're...
Yeah, they'll give us new stuff.
It'll be very interesting.
So we have, we have other items. Do we have any other items?
I have a question for staff for other items. It's a two-pager. Does staff know, could you give me an update on the linkage study between, I believe, is it 36 to 46 on Wadsworth?
The status of the Wadspell is that we got the IGA from CDOT in six days. They have a new process, so it takes six days instead of six weeks. So we're all impressed. We have signed the IGA and sent it back to them for them to sign, then it will come back to us, and then we'll start looking at getting a request for qualifications sent out to hire a consultant, so there's not going to be much beyond just paperwork right now until we get the consultant hired. Once we hire them, then we'll start having public meetings and all those other kinds of things.
And why did they, do you know why they determined that 36 to 46? Was that just a stamp?
That's the part that we actually put in for the application. 38th and 44th, that stretch is our worst section of Wadsworth for issues, accidents, and everything, and so we go then two streets, you know, a quarter mile south and a quarter mile north of that to cover the, if we do something in that range, then we've got to transition back to what's there today. So...
Do you know if there's any plans in the future to have some type of pedestrian linkage to connect to, say, underneath I-70 on Wadsworth?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time.
You guys, the room needs to be cleared, please. Thank you.
That's right. I'm getting older and diffier. Okay, pedestrian linkage to?
To like I-70. There's a sidewalk that comes just north of Johnson Park, and then it kind of stops right there.
Yes. As part of our Bike Pit Master Plan, we're working on master plans to do stuff there. If we have an opportunity to get some grant money or something to extend some things, I've got some weird ideas of what we could do to try to fit between the existing retaining walls. This study would only address up to 46th. Anything north of there would be covered in our Bike Pit Master Plan, and so that'd be something we'd be working on as a part of that project.
Okay.
It is our goal to try to get pedestrian connections up and down Wadsworth much better than what we have today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other other items? No?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Vote.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Okay, thank you, guys.